Twenty-eight, two thousand and sixteen. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Berman. Mayor Burt.
Here.
Councilmember DeBois. Councilmember Phil Seth. Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wolbach.
I want to let him know you're here.
Eight present.
Thank you. And our first item tonight is agenda changes, additions and deletions. And we have to announce that we have an item that was consent calendar item number fifteen from last night, approval of a contract with West Bay Arborus, is now our item number four for this evening. And before we hear from members of the public on oral communications, I just want to make sure the public's aware that item number two A tonight, the 567 Maybell project, we had our public hearing on last Monday, the twentieth, and we opened and closed the public hearing. So all public comments were taken on that date, and we rolled over the council discussion till tonight. So I want to make sure people understood that process. So on that note, we have two members of the public to speak on oral communications. Our first is Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Arthur Lieberman.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. I would like, just like to remind you that we have more density now than we used to have. And that's, for most people, that's a bad thing, but it's not entirely bad. It makes possible a more sophisticated civilization and stuff. But if you would allow people to have smaller little parcels, like mini houses, and I know a few weeks ago, somebody brought that up, and you seemed to be agreeable, at least to thinking about it, but if you would at least turn your minds toward variances and toward a certain type of attitude toward poorer people who can't afford to have a big house or only nine houses on a platte that could hold ten or eleven, I think, I think the town would be happier, and I wish you could sort of turn your minds in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arthur Lieberman.
Good evening, Mayor Burt and councilpeople. I want to commend the council for rejecting the proposal for the Matadero Creek bike trail last week suggesting a street level path. Instead, you used common sense. I'm a cyclist myself, and I support council priorities for more bicycle routes in the city. The issue is not with priorities, but how those priorities are implemented and converted into specific plans. I don't want to speak about the specifics of that strange plan, but it's an example of just how far a bureaucratic imperative can drive a project antagonizing many citizens and spending and wasting city money. I heard that upwards of $370,000 was spent already just to study the feasibility of that project. Now, the Transportation Division has one inlet to its advanced thinking of bike paths, and that's the Pabak Committee. Those folks are dedicated cyclists, but they have never seen a bike path they don't like. But to have a better bike path layouts, one that benefit the general public, they need to open up their community outreach, enlarge their advisory board, include neighbors and pedestrians into their advanced thinking on specific routes. Now, the city also has a priority to create affordable housing, and I support that. But when the Maybell, when that priority was converted into the Maybell project proposed by the Palo Alto Housing Corporation, it ignited a firestorm in my neighborhood. I was president of the BPA at the time, and I was witness to how the grassroots of our community just stood up and exploded over what the great majority felt was a project they were unhappy with but was being forced upon them. The Housing Corporation was stubborn and inflexible. On the other hand, the Golden Gate people who come out with this other project reached out, invited the community to provide input, incorporated that into their project plans. That's a model of how things should be done. If it were followed elsewhere, there would be fewer appeals to you by neighbors of developments. So my point is that when considering new projects, city officials need to really think about the concerns and opinions of citizens at a very early stage, earlier than what generally happens now, and really listen to them, make an effort to listen to them, not after hiring consultants, and not after spending a lot of money on proposals and designs. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to commence with the continuation of 567 Maybell, approval of a mitigated negative declaration, and a tentative track map with lot size exceptions to subdivide four parcels totaling 2.47 acres into sixteen single-family lots ranging from 5,000 square feet to 6186 square feet, and one parcel for a private street. The environmental assessment is a mitigated negative declaration. The zoning districts are R2 and RM15. This item was continued from June 20th. So we had a staff report. I don't know whether you have any other things to share. Oops. So at this time, we are open to having questions from councilmembers, because I think we went straight to comments from members of the public. And so are there questions that colleagues have? Or now, seeing none, we can go into comments. Nobody's wanting to leap. Yep. I did. So let me ask staff to explain a little more on the issue of the pedestrian path consideration, and then, secondly, on the in-lu fees. At what point in time did staff bring forward a recommendation for a pedestrian path?
From the very beginning, Jody Gerhart, current planning manager. From the very beginning, staff, along with our Transportation Division, had looked at this property and had originally asked the applicant to include a through-street, to the point that we made sure that that was part of the TIA, the Traffic Impact Analysis. You know, through conversations with the community, we heard pretty loud and clear that that was not something that the community was looking for. And so that's at the point that we started bringing it forward to hearings, is when we sort of minimized that request down to a pedestrian path. And it really is to conform to the comprehensive plan, to have better connectivity to the rest of the neighborhood.
And is staff now proposing a path that would be wide enough for bicycles and pedestrians? Or what are the, what's the design of this?
Thank you, Hillary Gittleman, the planning director. And I should mention that Jody and I are really standing in for the project staff who were scheduled to go on vacation after yesterday, so they won't be here this evening. But the current, or the request that was part of the discussion at the Planning Commission meeting was for effectively a five-foot-wide path, so pedestrians only. It would have to be a little wider for fencing and landscaping, but five feet would be the clear area for pedestrian travel.
And I heard there was some consideration on whether it might be a controlled access path or an open path. Has that been discussed?
We actually left open that it could be controlled. I mean, certainly, it would primarily serve the residents of the parcel, of the interior parcels that are being developed as part of this map. And so it's possible that it could be controlled by the private owners as, in the future. We didn't specify one way or the other.
Okay. And then, on the issue of the affordable housing on-site or in-lu fees, one of the considerations for the council was the amount of the in-lu fees we have coming forward in the near future, revision to the in-lu fees that presumably would increase them. What's the timing on that, and how would that interplay with approval of this project? So if we basically allowed in-lu fees, would they be at the current rate, or would they be at the new revised rate when that comes forward?
Thank you for that question. It is not really a simple explanation. So under the current ordinance, the in-lu fees would be 7.5% of the sale price, so they would be payable when the, when the houses sell. Under the proposed new ordinance, the fees would become effective at the time a building permit is issued. So it'd be a little sooner, it'd be easier to administer. We are currently drafting an ordinance at the Finance Committee's recommendation, and we have to take that to the Planning Commission and then to the council. Our hope is that we can get that to the council in August. When we first proposed the fees to the Finance Committee, our recommendation for single-family detached was $95 a square foot. And with that $95 a square foot, you're correct, it would be more than what we estimate the fees would be under the current ordinance or the 7.5% of the sale price. In discussions with the Finance Committee, there were concerns that the residential fees were out of scale with the commercial fees on commercial land uses. And so the Finance Committee's last recommendation to us involved a $50 a square foot fee for residential, all residential types, condominiums and single-family detached. With that $50 a square foot fee, it would actually be quite a bit less than the current in-lu fees. So obviously, this is a policy decision. It will ultimately be up to the full council, the structure of the fee and the amount that's charged per square foot. But if our recommendation holds true, the fees would be collected at building permit issuance, so well in advance of the sale of the units.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Scharf.
Thanks. So a couple things. First of all, I'm glad that the, that the project is so satisfactory to the neighborhood. People seem enthused about having this project, and I think that's a great thing. And obviously, the developer did a really good job working with the neighbors and coming to something that everyone seemed happy about. And I think that's all really good reasons to support the project. So I wanted to make some comments, and they're not against the project. I just think I want to basically state a couple of things that's interesting that I think we need to think of as a council, is we've looked at a lot of development projects over the past two years. And I've heard statements from this council that we won't approve things that don't meet code, that we don't want to have exceptions, that we look at the land use, there's a draft record of council land use findings whenever we have them, and we go through them and we say, does it really meet this? Are we really okay with that? So I'm really glad that we're actually starting to show some flexibility as a council. When a project is made better, and it makes sense to make those exceptions, we don't need to be so fundamentalist about, does it meet code, does it meet the zoning exceptions, and all of that. And I'll just point out in Section Four, the exception findings on page seven of the staff report, where it says, "The proposed project's exceptions to the zoning standards for lot size, lot width, and lot depth for the following and depicted on ten of Met Golden Gate Homes," they give that. And then they say, "The except, the reason we're granting this is because the neighborhood wants a lower density and not the higher density, and therefore, we should grant this." And so I just want to point out that it's outcome-based, and I think that's fine. I think what we're doing is being responsive to the neighborhood, and we're making a better project. But I think when other projects come before us, we should also ask ourselves, does it make it a better project? And so far, what I've been hearing previously on this council is that it doesn't matter if it makes it a better project. If it doesn't meet the exact zoning and the code, therefore, we should turn it down. And I'm really glad to see, if we vote for this, that we're moving away from that fundamentalist approach that we'd started to take towards zoning. So I wanted to say that. Then the other thing that I wanted to basically comment on was the affordable housing issue. So this is a little confusing to me. Every time something comes to our council and someone says they need a hardship exception, and here, the hardship exception is that it would cost the developer too much money to provide the in-lu, the units on-site as opposed to paying the in-lu fees. We always ask for documentation. I don't think in seven years being on council, I've ever actually had someone just say, "It costs too much money," and provide no pro forma, provide no documentation, not prove it. And so I'd really like to see some proof that they actually need that. Now, on the other hand, there is a good argument that two units in four-million-dollar homes for affordable housing doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense. And I'd be the first to acknowledge that. But the issue really here is that it's so much less money that the developer should pay by going ahead with the in-lu fee. I think the developer should probably pay more than what they're paying than the seven and a half percent, or they should provide the units. And I think there should be some compromise based on, okay, well, if you want a hardship exemption, how much money can you actually afford? What is your return? Why do you need the hardship exemption? And if so, should you pay more? So I don't really believe that if, in most circumstances, if subdivision of sixteen units came to this council of four-million-dollar homes, we would say, "You don't have to provide the affordable housing per our code," which requires on-site units. And if we're going to make an exception to that code, which we're doing here, we should have a good reason to do so. And I'm fine with being flexible, but the developer should basically set forth why they need that exception. And it shouldn't just be, you know, it's too expensive with no, with no backup of the data. If I had the backup, and I had a pro forma, and it said, "It's too expensive," I'd understand, and I'd say, "Yes," because I believe in being flexible. That may make the most sense. But what is the right amount of the fee, given how much money you're going to make, given your return, and those kind of things? So those are my initial thoughts on the project.
Councilmember DeBois.
Yes, on the, on the issue of the path, I think Cleemo is kind of the best path there is, and it's really not that. It's four houses away. And I think cutting a path between the homes is going to cut down on the lot size and impact the privacy of those units. 4.2 million for affordable housing. I think the argument that that can pay for more units elsewhere is actually a good one in this case, given the size of these houses. We have a fee policy. I think we're acting consistently with that practice. I don't think we should start making up fees based on profitability. I don't think we've done that with other people in terms of in-lu fees. And there are two exceptions. I think one lot, 5,000 square feet, and one that's 5682. And I think we are being responsive to the neighborhood and to the residents, and I think we have been responsive in the past, and I hope we'll continue to be responsive. But I don't think we should minimize. I think it's extremely rare that we have a developer and a petition from citizens and a whole bunch of people show up two nights to say they support a development. I haven't seen that since I've been on council. I haven't seen it before I was on council. So I really don't think we should underestimate that. Do you want to thank Golden Gate Homes for the process and reaching out and working with the neighbors? I think it was very positive. I'd love to see more projects do this. And, you know, I'd like to go ahead and move that we approve the mitigated negative declaration and the track map.
Clerk capture that. You want to be clear on your motion?
Just, you know, move the staff recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. You want to speak to your motion further?
No, I think I just did.
Councilmember Phil Seth, you want to speak to a second? Okay. I don't see a lot of light, so I'll just, oh, there we go. Okay. Councilmember Niss.
We're moving unusually fast tonight. So let me make a couple of comments just as well. This has been an extraordinarily complicated kind of issue. I know many of you, I probably think I've had an email from everybody here. I'd be willing to bet. So if you think you sent me an email, put up your hand. Uh-huh. And, and we were delighted to hear from you. But I would echo a couple of things. There are, there are a couple of exceptions here, and I think it's important to note that because this will happen again. We will have other kinds of development and developments that come to us, and people will say, "We've worked this out with the developer. It's going to work well in our neighborhood." And I want us to remember that. You all have worked extraordinarily well together, and you've been working on this now for a couple of years. I think you have something that is really going to be very desirable in your neighborhood, and that, of course, is what, that's what this is all about. Most of what your city council does is land use, and most of the reason that you come to talk to us for some reason almost always is land use. And land use almost always involves somebody's money. Not always yours, not always mine, but it's going to involve somebody's money. Land use and land use decisions and zoning are kind of what makes a city world go around. So I'm delighted it finally has worked out. I do want to mention that I hope the affordable housing does come to fruition, that we add that into our, into our fund. And while we haven't added much affordable housing lately, I hope that's a direction we'll go in, particularly with this kind of in-lu amount that's going to come to us as a result of the vote that I anticipate we're going to be taking very shortly tonight.
Councilmember Wolbach.
When a previous project was proposed on this site, opposition was broad across Palo Alto and was based on a number of different concerns. Different people opposed the previous project for different reasons, sometimes mutually exclusive reasons. For those who live in the neighborhood and had, I think, some legitimate concerns about the aesthetics and about safety related to the previous project, I fully respect that and acknowledge that. I was in favor of the prior project, but I understood that there were pros and cons, and it was a, it was a tough call. It was never a perfect project. I don't think this is a perfect project either. I do find it interesting, though, that I remember speaking to a significant number of people about the prior project who said to me, "Look, I'm not opposed to affordable housing. My problem is the single-family homes on the site." And I'm just surprised that we haven't heard those people come forward and say, "Where is the affordable housing?" Because what we're left now with is just the single-family market-rate homes and none of the affordable housing that was previously proposed. So for those people who wanted an entirely affordable project previously and said that their only concern was the single-family market-rate homes on the site, I note their silence on this project. I will not be supporting this. I think that we're rushing this. I don't feel comfortable with the affordable housing not being on-site, and I'm not comfortable with rejecting a second pedestrian or bike path two weeks in a row. So I will not be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Holman.
So this is, this is an unusual situation, and if you will, predicament for the council to be in. It seems like this project has been designed basically with staff, like, getting out of the way. And in a way, I sort of appreciate that because, I've said before, it's like nobody knows how a neighborhood lives better than the people who live in the neighborhood. So in a way, I really appreciate the involvement, the engagement, and it seems like there's been sort of this negotiation between the developer and the neighbors. That's good. Good on you all. Is this the project that I would design? If it was up to me, not really. But neither was the prior Maybell project, which I voted for. You know, no project's going to be perfect. I, I do feel like I need to speak to exceptions, though, because there are exceptions and there are exceptions. And these are ones that the neighbors are here supporting, you know, and from their perspective at least, this makes the project better. Most of the exceptions that we see at the dais are ones that cause the public to react negatively. And from my personal perspective, I don't think usually make the projects better, so that's for exceptions. You know, the path, it's not that large of a site. It does have, I mean, I'm all for bike and especially ped paths. It's not that big of a site. It does have streets on four sides of a not very large lot, so I'm not that wedded to it. It'd be nice, but I'm not that wedded to it. The BMR units, I'd always rather see the BMR units created on-site. I would always rather see that. I truly would. I'm not absolutely convinced by the information that the developer has provided. I think that's what Councilmember Scharf or Vice Mayor Scharf was saying, too. I'm not absolutely committed to thinking that that is accurate or compelling evidence. So I'm, it's, it's hard. I don't think we're rushing it. It's been going on for a long time, in one iteration or another. I'm a little bit hedgy on the BMR units, and I'm probably, given how far this is and the status that this is, I'm probably prone to support the project as it is, but I'm, I'm hedgy on the BMR units.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
So a couple of things. First of all, I just want to address briefly what Councilmember DeBois said. Maybe I misunderstood. But just to clarify, the below-market program states that the housing units have to be on-site. That's not, you know, unless there is an exception, unless you grant an exception based on feasibility. And the feasibility people are talking about here are financial feasibility. And in this case, a developer has just written a letter that says it's financially infeasible with no backup, no proof. Normally, we would never take that. We are granting that exception because we like the project, and we like the fact. And frankly, it's not really good process. I know it's not a good process, and I think Councilmember Holman is speaking to it, it's not good process. But I think it's important to admit and to be honest what we're doing up here. And then, when it comes to exceptions, I actually agree with Councilmember Holman on that. My plea is not that we should grant or not grant exceptions based on neighbors. What I'm saying is that we should be flexible on exceptions. When they are good exceptions, make the project better. And in this case, I do think it makes the project better to have those smaller lots because you fit them in, and it makes sense. I also think that it probably doesn't make sense to have two units on-site, given this size. But I do think in exchange for not forcing a developer to do that, we should look at what a fair price would be, not just take their word for it. And maybe, maybe they're correct. Maybe, you know, they can't afford it, maybe the project doesn't work without it, in which case, I would be willing to accept that. The problem I have on this is that it doesn't seem that there's any sense of, we don't know the answer. And we are a, we are a data-driven council that always drills down, asks the hard questions, and then makes the decision in an open and transparent way, and we don't paper over stuff. I sort of feel like we're just papering it over literally. We get a letter from the developer, and fine, check that box. So that's my concern. Now, I did want to ask staff about what's included in this motion. So the way I understand it is we're approving the negative declaration and Attachment B, which is the draft record of the council, City Palo Alto, use, use action for 567 Maybell, which starts on page five of my packet. Is that correct? So maybe I'm reading it wrong, but when I go to conditions of approval, the conditions of approval, as far as I can tell, on number three, and maybe I read it too quickly and it says we're somewhere else, but when I read condition number three, what am I missing? It says that you have to build the units on-site. That's the condition of approval. So if we pass this motion, they have to build it on-site. I just, you know, didn't feel right about council voting to do that when everyone else thinks we're doing the opposite. So I just wanted to make sure. Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Yeah. Thank you for that question. Actually, condition number three restates the requirement in the city's zoning ordinance, and it says that the units should be provided on-site unless on-site construction is found to be infeasible. And we provided a supplemental memo to the council dated June 20th, which states that absent direction from the city council at the public hearing to the contrary, staff will accept the in-lu payment as satisfying the affordable housing obligation, and that would be consistent with that condition.
So this is a wonky question. We don't usually put that in the condition of approval that we've, we've looked at and we found it to be infeasible? That, that doesn't go in the, in the conditions of approval? So it's just, it's just a letter we do separately?
Well, I mean, we could have done that. What we did here was restate the code provision.
Okay, good. All right. So that's fine. Okay, so those are my concerns, and... Okay, so those are my concerns, and we'll see where we go from there.
Councilmember Phil said.
I just want to extend a big thank you to Golden Gate Homes on this. I think you guys have set the gold standard for neighborhood outreach, and I appreciate it very much. And, you know, I hope very much that we're going to approve this plan tonight, and assuming we do, I wish you good luck and Godspeed on the project. Thanks.
So I am going to support the proposal principally because our staff and the neighborhood, as a result of the process that was accepted, has invested a year or more in bringing this project forward. And we're going to do it not because I think that this truly is the appropriate project for a number of reasons. First, I want to say that I believed at the time that both the project that came to us a couple of years ago and the process that brought it there were flawed. And I attempted to have a couple of modifications to the project to make it less onerous. Those failed against the majority of the council at the time. I had expressed an interest in extending the process, and that failed as well. But what we've done is gone the other end of the pendulum. We now have a process that really -- this project is contrary to what were the overwhelming arguments made by the opponents to the previous project. The opponents said that they wanted a project consistent with zoning and consistent with the comp plan. And if -- I see some shaking heads, but for instance, our exception, we had to make four different exceptions here, basically because it isn't compliant. That's why we're having to make these exceptions. One is reason why we're the -- number four, the granting of the exception will not violate requirements, goals, policies, or spirit of the law, and we have to make an exception to that. And the statement is, as a reason, is because it is not likely the site will yield multifamily densities, given the neighborhood opposition. Not based on the zoning, just simply based on political opposition. And we have under exception number two, a statement that we have, "This is not R1 zoning." And that's basically what we have. We have a project that is R1. And number two, it says that the original intent of the applicant was to develop the property to be consistent with R2 and RM15 zoning, which would have included at least 23 dwelling units. So those are the facts and the truth. And we do have a project that the applicant has agreed to, but it's really not truthful that this is a project that the applicant enthusiastically agreed to. It was because prior proposals by the applicant were pushed back against, and that's what occurred. So I don't think we -- I think that we should add the integrity to be honest about what's happened and what we have before us. And I do think that there -- my greatest concern is not so much the outcome of this particular site, because back when we had the opposition, I said it a number of times, I think that the neighborhood opposition, which is the opposition of the side of the neighborhood of this project that are the single-family home occupants. It's important to remember, there are four sides to this project. One side is single-family homes. Two sides are higher density, one very high density, and one side is a park. So three-quarters are not single-family homes. I would venture that virtually everyone here tonight is from the single-family home neighborhood. We tend, as homeowners, to -- so I guess I'm seeing a nodding head no. Can anyone who's from a multifamily residence nearby there just raise their hand? Okay, great. So we have five. We have -- we had opposition that was really not so much emotionally based upon consistency with zoning, although the prior project exceeded the zoning. It was against existing conditions. The emotional attachment, it had been for decades what were essentially single-family homes along Maybell and an orchard behind it. And really, the passions were about -- the argument was made, "Don't violate the zoning." And really, I think the emotions were, "Don't violate the existing conditions in an unacceptable way." And that's, I think, the reality. And that's not an invalid emotion, but I think we need to be honest about if we have opposition to a project that says it's based upon that we want the zoning followed and we want the comprehensive plan followed, and then, once that prevailed at the ballot box, we have a project that isn't consistent with the zoning and really isn't consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is consistent with the wishes of the neighboring, single-family neighborhood. And I'm really concerned about the process that we have going forward. I think we don't -- we need to reexamine how we deal with projects, especially if a new project, even if an underlying zoning allows for something higher density, if it is different from what has been existing in a neighborhood, we have to acknowledge that that's going to have real concerns unless design and compatibility are good and unless there is a real participation from the outset of the various stakeholders. And when I say the various stakeholders, that isn't just the single-family neighbors adjacent. When we had, for instance, the SOFA plans, and I was head of the University South Neighborhood Group when we did that, we had a very extensive process that was a multi-stakeholder process, which included about half of the positions in the stakeholder group, really being representatives of the neighborhood interests, and half being a variety of other interests about -- there were affordable housing folks, and there were daycare representatives, and there were adjacent business representatives, and it was a multi-stakeholder group. And through that process, we worked through a bunch of issues, and we came to not only compromises, but solutions that everybody embraced. And we didn't do that investment at the outset here, and so we came and we've swung back with something else that is basically the wishes of one side, that is contrary to our zoning and really, very arguably, contrary to the comp plan. And I see people here like Bob Moss, who have berated us time and again about not complying consistently with zoning nor with a comp plan. And we have to have the integrity to say, "Well, wait a minute. That means we have to try to do that consistently." We can't say, "I want you to do it when it favors me, and I want you to completely ignore it when I want something different." So there are processes even to change zoning as well. So I don't think this is a rush process, and I'm not going to make that argument because I think that's a fallacious argument. It's gone through a slow, deliberate process, and it's had plenty of time. But I do want to make sure that when we go forward as a community on other projects, that we look at early engagement and meaningful involvement with the neighborhood and with additional interests. And as a city council, we're elected representing the entire community, and that includes the broad community interests. And those of us who are -- most of us here on the council and most of us here in this room are single-family homeowners, and that's only about half of the community. And we tend to think it's everybody. We tend to think we're everybody and that we're all that matter, but it's really not the case. And when we, as council members, we have an obligation to represent the range of interests, the citywide interests and the neighborhood interests. Not just the citywide interests, which is really where we faulted on this initially, and not just the neighborhood, immediate, single-family neighborhood interests. And this is a definition that excludes the TAM apartments and the other apartments adjacent because those neighbors are not the ones who advocated for this project. So it's a portion of the neighborhood interests are what really have determined this project. So that's my best effort as being as honest as I can about what has occurred here. And my concern's about trying to make sure that we do neither the first extreme nor the latter extreme going forward, but we come with a better process that will look at a balance of interests. And I'll just add, when we did the SOFA neighborhood, this neighborhood embraced a multifamily home development and an affordable housing project and a daycare center, and we had a park. Now, that was a big project, and it was different from this. I don't mean to say that it was identical. But we asked ourselves, "What are our values, and what trade-offs are we willing to make? What are the community values? What are our individual values? How do we reconcile them?" And out of that, we came up with something that was arguably a pretty good outcome that certainly nobody -- no one person gets to design the whole thing and say, "This is exactly what I want, therefore, it's going to happen." But overall, it achieved consensus, and that's the sort of approach I'd like to see going forward. So pardon the long talk on it, but I think that there was a hesitancy on the council to really say some of these things, and hopefully, at least, I've expressed them on behalf of some of my colleagues. So I think we are ready to go forward, unless anybody else wishes to speak.
I have one clarification.
Go ahead.
Because it now has come up several times. Hillary, would you go through once more what is actually going to be the in-lu fee in this particular situation and how it will be calculated? I think the vice mayor spoke to that. I think Karen has --
Didn't quite ask the amount, but you're concerned about the affordable housing.
Councilmember Niss, we don't know. So the answer is that it will be the fee in place at the time the building permits are issued. We have in process a revision to the fees, which could cause them to either go up or down or stay the same from where they are, and that's the answer.
And that's the part I find troubling.
Well, that's the answer.
That is an answer and a good answer, but that is -- and I think that's one of the things you're hearing us struggle with tonight, is where does the send-up and where does the affordable housing actually go in our community? Thanks.
So Councilmember Wolbach, we've all had a go-around. I allowed Councilmember Niss to ask a question for clarification. If we're starting another round of comments, I don't want to do that.
Okay, great. We got it. All right. Please vote on the board. And that passes on an eight-to-one vote, with Councilmember Wolbach voting no and the balance voting yes. Thank you all for coming tonight. So I don't know if people want to -- are taking off. We'll give you a moment to leave it. We kind of need people to clear out and order to start the next item.
Convening. So our next item is a continued public hearing for 1601 California Avenue. A request by the Board of Trustees of Stanford University to amend the final map for track number 10281, which was recorded in January 2015, for the 1451 to 1601 California Avenue development, which includes a total of 180 dwelling units. The environmental assessment was a, by the City of Palo Alto and Stanford University Development and the environmental impact report. The zoning district is the research park and alternative standard overlays, too. So Ms. Gettleman?
Thank you, Mayor Burton.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember DeBois needs to announce.
Yeah, since this is real property owned by Stanford University and they're a source of income, I'm going to recuse myself from this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Burton, councilmembers. I'm Hillary Gettleman, the planning director. I'm joined by Jody Gerhardt, who's our current planning manager. And again, Jody and I are standing in for the project planner who had planned to be here yesterday, but when the item was continued, it was not consistent with his vacation schedule. So luckily, Jody has a lot of background on this site, being involved in prior entitlements. So we're here to discuss the proposed amendment to the final map for 1601 California Avenue. The project derives from the Mayfield Development Agreement, which was adopted by Stanford and the city in 2005. There was an EIR certified to cover that agreement and subsequent projects under the agreement. The agreement itself allows for 180 units on the project site, and a tentative map was approved in 2014 to subdivide the parcel. Subsequent to that, the buildings were demolished on the site, and this allowed for additional testing for soil contamination as anticipated in the EIR. Just a quick project overview, we're talking about a six-acre site that was formerly, formerly had a HP building on it. Once the building was demolished, there was a supplemental investigation and risk assessment conducted, which is sometimes we refer to as a Phase II site investigation and a risk assessment. There was identification of TCE contaminants that have resulted in the requested revision to the final map. Just to summarize, the site remediation and mitigation that we're talking about, this graphic shows the shaded area is where soil has been excavated and removed from the site. This soil was contaminated by PCBs. Then the dots that are shown on the map are the hotspots of TCE concentrations that are at 15 to 25 feet below the basement level and are proposed to remain in place. There's mediation proposed as part of the final map amendment to, that involves relocating the homes, and Stanford has also proposed slabs and vapor barriers and a number of other things. There will also, at some point, be a site management plan or land use controls that apply to the open space area, which is now where these TCE spots are located. There was extensive characterization of soils and groundwater on this site, as well as the chemical constituents. And there are experts here tonight who prepared, and also experts who reviewed for the state agency DTSC, the materials and the studies that were conducted. So I'm going to invite them to speak to the issue that's been raised about whether any of the contaminated soil conditions on the site could have migrated off the site. I'm not aware of any connection between any off-site contamination and what we're talking about here that would be addressed by the final map amendment. I have two brief pictures in the presentation. This is the layout that was approved previously, and this is the proposed layout. You'll notice that the number of homes along California Avenue stays the same. All the street connections to California Avenue stay the same. The revisions maintain the 180 dwelling units that were originally proposed. They redistribute some of the homes, creating that open space in the middle of the site, some smaller lots, increased common area, and some of the units, as a result, will have reduced square footage and fewer bedrooms. I just want to summarize for you the implementation of mitigation measures from the EIR and then the final map findings that will need to be made. The EIR mitigation called for this Phase II survey and a work plan and corrective action plan if needed, if the testing found constituents of concern. So that has been done. They've conducted the Phase II analysis and this risk assessment. They've removed contaminated soils, and the state agency with jurisdiction DTSC has concurred with the recommendations in the risk assessment. In terms of next steps, Stanford will submit preliminary endangerment assessment for review by the state agency. We expect that they will receive a no further action letter, probably with conditions, and the conditions will probably relate to some kind of land use control or management plan for this open space area that now contains those hotspots of TCE. As the councils are aware, we've received a whole lot of public comments regarding this item and the potential for contamination off-site, and I want to thank all of those who submitted comments prior to this meeting. I'm sure we'll hear a summary as we move forward into the public comment period. Among the comments we received was a request to delay this action this evening until the DTSC could take its, issue its final, final action, a request for additional mitigation measures beyond what Stanford has proposed, a request for further site remediation, and a discussion regarding the risk to off-site homes. And in addition to data secured through actual collecting of additional samples and testing off-site. We understand that DTSC has received and will evaluate the testing that was done by the neighbors, and obviously, it's a serious issue, and we look forward to hearing the results of their review. We do not, at this point, believe that those tests and any contamination that's confirmed would relate to what's happening on-site and the site conditions. And again, I will defer to the experts on this issue. The staff report summarizes the findings that need to be made for final map amendment, and I'll just draw your attention to the first one, changes in circumstances that make any or all of the map no longer appropriate or necessary. Obviously, in this case, we're referring, the changes in conditions and circumstances relate to the TCE contamination that was discovered during the anticipated site investigation that was clearly anticipated in the EIR. I'd say, just on top of that, that often in sequa parlance, you know, so when we're talking about environmental review, we often talk about changes in circumstances as necessitating additional environmental review. This is really a different context. The EIR anticipated that we would do site, additional site characterization and take care of any contaminants that were identified. The record of land use action contains these final map findings, the sequa determination, and provides an opportunity to the council, if the council wishes, for additional findings related to some of the mitigation measures that Stanford has proposed, the extraordinary 10-inch slab, the vapor barriers under the homes. We could also use that opportunity to condition the building permit issuance for the seven homes closest to these TCE hotspots, condition those building permits on the no further action. So just to give us a further comfort that that will be taken care of in an expeditious manner. So Jody and I are here to answer any questions you have. At this point, we would recommend you hear from the applicant, the public, and then the applicant will have a short rebuttal, and then, of course, council questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So first, do we have any questions of staff before hearing from the applicant? All right, the applicant has up to 10 minutes to speak. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. My name is Chris Woethman. I'm with Stanford University of Real Estate, and I am manager of the California Avenue, now known as University Terrace Housing Development. In 2005, the Mayfield Development Agreement and its EIR required Stanford University to obtain review and approval of hazardous material mitigation at the Upper California Housing Development from the California Department of Toxic Substance Control. The purpose of this hearing is to confirm our compliance with oversight by the DTSC and to approve amendment of our subdivision plan for purposes of improved mitigation. While it is not council's role to evaluate DTSC's scientific and technological judgments, it is important for you to understand how we came to the point of proposing a more conservative layout for part of the proposed site. To begin, while Stanford and Palo Alto knew in 2005 of the likely existence of contaminants on the California Avenue site, Stanford was not able to begin fully evaluating these conditions until 2013, when it began regaining control of the properties, and environmental consultants were able to commence the required Phase II testing. The results of the investigations of the first two properties, 1451 and 1501 California Avenue, led the DTSC to issue no further action letters in 2013, which stated that the sites did not pose a significant risk to human health or the environment under residential land use. Based in part on these findings, we initiated our development application for the overall property in October 2013, and ultimately received final map subdivision, final subdivision map approval in December 2014. We moved forward with our development and subdivision map in this fashion, in part because there was great desire by our neighbors, the College Terrace Neighborhood, for us to make use of the temporarily available access route from Page Mill Road through the 1450 Page Mill property as long as possible, even though we had not yet regained control of the final portion of the property, i.e., 1601 California Avenue. This decision was well disclosed and discussed by all participants during the development approvals. The final map enabled us to get our first permits for new construction, and starting construction within this timeframe did indeed prove to be beneficial for the College Terrace Neighborhood, as over 11,500 heavy truck trips were able to use the Page Mill access to the site through September 2015. Stanford regained control of the 1601 property at the end of 2014. After the building was demolished, our experts detected elevated levels of TCE in soil vapor samples collected in the vicinity of the sump beneath the former building. This soil vapor was located 14 to 25 feet below pre-development grade and located in areas where up to 15 feet of fill is planned to be added on top of, on top within the site plan. Notwithstanding the depths of these readings, however, modeling indicated that seven houses in our previous plan would be located over soil vapor concentrations that would potentially cause a greater than one chance in a million risk of cancer if one were to maintain, remain indoors 24/7 for 26 years, which is the conservative level of health risk applied by the state at which risk management measures are considered. It would be possible to leave these houses in place by installing in-ground ventilation systems underneath them. If Stanford had elected that approach, the subdivision map would not need to be amended, and we would not need any action by City of Palo Alto. But Stanford decided to take the more conservative route by moving the houses away from the locations of higher vapor concentrations for two reasons, even though it does require us densifying a bit and reducing our total housing square footage somewhat. One, we would prefer not to make it necessary for homeowners to have to check and maintain the functioning of a mechanical system underneath their foundation slabs to mitigate soil vapor intrusion. And two, unlike many developers who may need to maximize development of their property, we are in a position to choose to downsize the, downsize the project slightly and revise the location of the affected houses. On April 4th, DTSC approved this plan as sufficiently characterizing and defining the nature and extent of contamination, and is presenting a redevelopment plan posing no significant risk to future site residents within the specific soil and groundwater conditions of the site. This followed six months of review and comment on Stanford's environmental consultant's investigation and analysis, which time period included a transparent process that included meeting with and receiving and responding to comments from the College Terrace Community and the Center for Public Environmental Outreach. You have, in your staff report, the extensive responses from DTSC, two questions raised by neighbors over the past eight months. You will also find in there the peer review of the analysis and plan by Dr. Paul Johnson, the co-creator of the industry standard vapor intrusion model, which was requested by Stanford. As you know, several residents have recently conducted their own sampling of 19 homes in College Terrace adjacent to the project, and have implied that TCE from 1601, from the 1601 site, has migrated to some of their dwellings. A quick expert review of their document raises serious questions regarding the scientific validity of its methodology. DTSC has not completed their review of the reported results, however, even if the readings College Terrace residents collected were accurate, they would not change the determination regarding the best layout of residences at 1601 California Avenue. Stanford's environmental consultant intentionally tested most thoroughly in the area along California Avenue to define the extent of contamination and found no evidence of migration toward College Terrace. In a March 18 response to the CPOE, DTSC stated, quote, "The College Terrace community is safe with respect to potential vapor intrusion to constituents detected in soil vapor at University Terrace based on several lines of evidence, including the geologic units of the site, the collection of soil vapor data over 10 years, and the removal of all potential sources of TCE from the site." Most recently, in light of College Terrace's just submitted sampling, DTSC communicated to city staff, reiterating its conclusion that 1601 has been adequately characterized, and stated that concern about potential existence of TCE in the College Terrace Neighborhood is a separate issue that does not affect the approval of Stanford's 1601 site plan. In conclusion, our request is that, based on DTSC's approval of our revised layout, you approve amendment of our subdivision plan to enable us to implement this mitigation and not have to stop work in the area over the summer. Representatives of DTSC are here this evening to answer questions about analysis and mitigation of the site and their remaining work before closure. Also present are the professionals from Haley &amp; Aldrich, the firm that perform, perform the environmental investigation and analysis, who can also comment on methodological questions about College Terrace's sampling. Annette Walton, Director, Stanford Environmental Management, is here this evening as well. And finally, to conclude this presentation, we would like to have our land use attorney, Julie Jones, say a few words about how the process fits within the development agreement and the EIR. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Julie Jones, Land Use Counsel for Stanford on this project, and I was actually involved in the preparation or the work on the EIR back in 2005 for the Mayfield Development Agreement. I wanted to provide a little bit of background on that agreement and on the EIR for it, just to be clear about where we are in the process. Because as Chris mentioned, at, in 2005, it was known that none of the residential development under the Mayfield Development Agreement would occur until at least 2013, when the leases on the existing properties would expire. So it was always known that more work would need to be done and more analysis would need to be done when those properties became available. And so the properties were characterized, it was known that there was contamination at both of the properties, both for the BMR housing and for, and for this project, for the Upper California housing, and that TCE was a commonly used substance in the, in the research park. So what the EIR did was it called, it identified... So what the EIR did was it called, it identified potentially significant impacts to residents, to construction workers, and to the public if levels were at a certain rate and if it could escape. So there were three mitigation measures included in the EIR to call for further investigation and compliance with the regulatory agency requirements, and in this case, DTSC is the regulatory agency. What the EIR concluded based on those mitigation measures was that any impacts would be reduced to less than significant. So where we are right now is asking whether there is new information, as has been suggested, that would undermine that mitigation measure. Should I continue?
Try and take a moment to wrap up.
Okay. I will take a moment to wrap up.
There'll be a rebuttal time as well at the end.
Okay. All right. So I'll just conclude by saying that the impacts or the investigation that has been done shows that there are no changes in circumstances that would show a new significant impact or a substantial increase in severity of previously identified impacts, and that is the standard under CEQA, and that's why we're just implementing the mitigation measure and moving forward.
Thank you. So we now will go to members of the public, and we have two different grouped speaker cards, if I'm reading this correctly. So the first one is Lenny Siegel, speaking on behalf of Sally Heaton, Pat Robinson, Eileen Stoli, and Diana Finkelstein. Welcome.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here not as a Mountain View colleague, but representing the Center for Public Environmental Oversight. We have funding from the United States Environmental Protection Agency to provide technical assistance to communities on vapor intrusion, and I have been working with the College Terrace residents since December. Let's see. Vapor intrusion is the migration of volatile toxic substances into overlying buildings. When a compound like TCE is in the subsurface, it volatilizes and is actually sucked up by buildings because of the lower vapor pressure inside the building or the air pressure inside the building and the vapor pressure in the soil. It is found in many places, like in Mountain View, all over the country, and it's something that can be resolved easily with a sub-slab depressurization or sub-slab venting system. The proponents here claim that because of the clay lithology, that the soil's clay, that the contamination is isolated and it doesn't move in the groundwater, it doesn't move in the soil, and I don't think the evidence backs that up. And I'm going to be saying a little bit about technical things, try to keep it fairly simple, and then explain why I think the mitigation that Department of Toxic Substances Control normally calls for and some of our neighboring communities call for would be more appropriate. The state uses these standards for exposure to TCE in indoor air. That's micrograms per cubic meter, doesn't really matter what the unit is, it's .48 to protect against cancer risk, 2.1 to protect pregnant women, because the risk of cardiac birth defects during pregnancy has to occur during the pregnancy. You know it's less than nine months, it turns out. The DTSC toxicologists say it could be as short as one day. And it's those goals for indoor air that all of the mitigation, all the plans are designed to protect people against. But because there's no indoors now, maybe they should have tested the old buildings before they were torn down, because there's no indoors now, you can't sample that. So what you do is you sample soil gas. Soil gas is the gas that's within the soil. I mean, soil isn't solid, it's got water and gas in it. And there are different versions of the soil gas screening levels that are used to predict whether or not you're going to exceed that .48 level, that is the target indoor air level based on cancer. US EPA would use 16 micrograms per cubic meter with their default ratio of indoor air to subsurface. California uses 480, and through a complex set of modeling, Haley &amp; Aldrich, on behalf of Stanford, has created this number of 11,000 to 53,000 based upon depth to predict, those are the numbers that the soil gas would have to exceed to bring indoor air to the level above the .48, which is the health-based target. And I don't think that's justified, that's basically justified by using the Johnson and Edinger model and the assertion that this is all uniform clay, and therefore, the buildings, the pressure differential, there's a lower pressure in the buildings, can't possibly pull up the contamination because there's so much clay and the vapors can't move. So this is real important when you get to looking at the map of the site. This is a map of the site, and here is the area that the consultants say is the source of the TCE. Until I talked to DTSC's project manager for this site, and it was December or January, she was unaware of a memo written by someone else at DTSC saying the contamination here at 1501 California was there as a result of migration, this would be groundwater migration, from the perceived source. That's about over 300 feet. So basically, they've been saying, don't worry about the distance that the contamination might move because it's all clay, when in fact, there's evidence that here, backed by a DTSC letter that says the contamination has moved 300 feet. There's another site here, groundwater on the site, where there's even more contamination in the groundwater. The consultants say, well, there really is no groundwater on the site, we can't find it, and that's probably a function of when and how and where they looked. But that's evidence that the contamination is not isolated, so that the hotspots that they've identified could impact people in the buildings at a closer distance. And this is where the testing in College Terrace over here is important. There is soil gas contamination here, it's between the level that EPA uses and the level that the state uses for what's acceptable, and the residents weren't comfortable that that was enough evidence that they weren't being exposed. So I arranged for one of the top-notch samplers for TCE and indoor air and soil gas, he's from San Diego, he came here and he did some sampling, and to our surprise, or to my surprise, they found it. Now, why is that important for this site? Well, basically, it says that there may be what's called a paleo-channel, a sand channel that connects this area to College Terrace, but it basically says that you can't rely on the clay to keep stuff from coming up into homes, because it has been found in the homes, and you can't rely on it keeping the contamination from moving horizontally. So the assumptions that they're using to say that you can simply put a home 50 feet from a very high hotspot, over 11,000 or 53,000 micrograms per cubic meter, is not borne out by the data. Now that we haven't done enough sampling to confirm that the TCE in these homes is coming from this property, but we know of no other source, and the fact that it was found in the crawl space as well as the indoor air suggests it's not coming from consumer products, because I'm aware of places in Mountain View and Southern California where Gun Cleaner has given a false indicator of vapor intrusion. Well, if it's found in the crawl space, that's much less likely. So basically, we have evidence which calls into question the argument that this stuff can't move more than 50 feet, and it can't move at low levels, it can't move up into the buildings. One more thing about the map, they say they've moved the buildings 50 feet from the hotspots, and the five hotspots they've identified are the ones that exceed the site-specific soil gas screening level that Haley &amp; Aldrich calculated. That's not quite true, and so even if you use their numbers, you have Building 30 over here, and I can't read it from here, but it's, I'm pretty sure that's where it is. Building 30 is 50 feet from this hotspot, however, there's no sampling between it. So up here, you have a building, and there's a lower level sampled between the hotspot and the building. Here, we don't know what the levels are, so they're saying that they've moved it 50 feet from the contamination, but in fact, they've just moved it 50 feet from where they've sampled. They don't really know how high the contamination is in this area. And of course, you've got areas over here where their building house is directly over contamination that exceeds Department of Toxic Substances Control's default attenuation factor. Again, they're using the fact that it's clay and a complex model to say, don't worry, the number is a couple orders of magnitude higher, that you'd have to trigger a problem. Now, it's really not that hard to solve this problem. This is Department of Toxic Substances Control document on how to mitigate exposure to TCE and other chemicals through vapor intrusion. I contributed to the development of this document, and if you look here, it's a great simple diagram. The way you mitigate is you have a pipe beneath the building with holes in it, and if it's new construction, it's usually horizontal, and then a pipe that leads to the top of the building, and in many cases, you have a fan to blow out the vapor from underneath. That creates depressurization under the building, so if there's a crack or hole, the contamination could move between the subsurface and the building and the indoor air, it moves downward. It's very protective, it's inexpensive, it's done all over the country, it grows out of our experience with radon. So they could do it, they said they don't want to do it because they don't want homeowners to have to check the manometer, this is, if you've seen a radon system, to see that it's working. It's like saying people can't deal with methane detectors or smoke alarms. It's rather simple to deal with, it's the standard way of mitigating. There are actually two ways. Sub-slab depressurization has a fan, sub-slab venting doesn't have a fan, it relies on the atmosphere to depressurize the subsurface, and sometimes that's done, we have some buildings in Mountain View where that's done, that aren't directly above plumes as this is, because you have the option of monitoring, and if you find a problem, then you can install a fan later. But it's a lot easier to put a pipe beneath the building or beneath the vapor barrier before you build the building than afterward, and that's why it's common practice to do one of these things in new construction where TCE and other contaminants are found. Both of those involve vapor barriers. Vapor barriers alone are not considered, considered, one more minute, vapor barriers are not considered by DTSC to be sufficient mitigation. You do need to do long-term management, I won't go into the details about that to make sure that things work, but basically, this building is built, these buildings are proposed to be built close to contamination at very high levels in the soil gas, and there's an easy way to protect people. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next speaker is Fred Balin, speaking on behalf of Eric Heaton, Ann Balin, Stuart Carl, William Heaton, and Doria Suma. Welcome.
Fred Balin, College Terrace. Mayfield, Upper California Avenue Housing, last agenda, last item before summer break once again. In June 2014, the hazmat section of your environmental confirmation concluded no new significant impacts. We now know that was not correct, because on the 1601 California Avenue parcel, for which a Phase II study was not submitted, nine months after your approval, TCE was discovered, originating from that site, a significant impact not noted. And we also know now that in 2014, the likelihood of TCE contamination from the 1601 Calav site was known but not reported to you, because on the adjacent parcel, 1501 Calav, where a Phase II assessment was submitted, TCE was detected in groundwater above maximum contamination level, 50 feet below ground, and the likely source identified as 1601 California Avenue. It's hard to see, but it's in the top-left-hand section of the middle graphic, which is the middle of the three properties. The finding was also specifically stated in a letter from DTSC to the applicant six months earlier, as I submitted to you today, but the information was not included in the source references for the environmental confirmation memo or other public communications to the city. Why? All right, let's move from groundwater to soil gas, the TCE vapor between soil particles. Here's what we faced when we finally received the 1601 Phase II risk assessment. Stay calm. Over 50 detection points marked with one or two symbols for screening level, connected to boxes with TCE measures at up to three depths, dotted outline for the former building, housing reorientation plan in the background, small legend at the bottom, and measured values ranging from single digits to almost 200,000. Enter the genius of resident scientist Ed Schmidt. This visualization was submitted to DTSC and you. Ed's overseas today. It's based on the very same data and screening level on the other chart. Here at each detection point, one value, the highest, and represented by the diameter of the symbol. Also estimated zones of high and low concentration, and it goes over onto the other property as well. How did he do it? Diameter is based on the cubed root of the measured value, and below, the last zone creation technique explained. And in addition, he superimposes the proposed project design. Hey, why are some homes in the orange zone? Well, as Lenny Siegel explained, the applicant's consultant model lets you increase the screening level by up to two orders of magnitude under certain conditions, up to 11,000 or up to 53,000. With all this in mind, Stanford's consultant created a new graphic, which you've seen already. Better, but now there are three colors for detection points. Royal blue for values below the 480 California default soil grass screening level, turquoise for values above 480 but below the maximum bonus level in the model, and orange for values that even exceed that level. Five discrete orange detection points, from which all houses are proposed to be set back at least 50 feet. And with DTSC acceptance, that's all Stanford will be required to do. Required number of units still fit on the site, and the TCE can remain in the ground unremediated. But wait, the applicant says we will unilaterally do more. They'll add some dirt and mitigations under the house that are less than the DTSC standard. And as for impacts in College Terrace, no. So we hired a gas chromatography expert in the field of vapor intrusion to validate the claim. A study was identified as sampling protocol established. Homeowners granted permission. Expert chromatography device and nitrogen cylinder set up in a temperature-controlled location in the neighborhood, and measured values under or within a third of the homes had levels above indoor air target concentrations. Why and what to do? The results and study based on it were submitted to DTSC, and we began work on answers to those questions when staff squeezed this item prematurely onto the calendar under a section of the code for technical corrections and limited environmental review, but we had hard data and presented it to the city attorney's office in quest of delay, until you have all the facts in front of you. It was passed on to planning and the city manager, who said, go ahead as planned, all is in order, off-site problems should not stop the application, and let DTSC make judgments when ready, but you approve now. A complete abdigation of responsibility. Whatever DTSC comes up with, they're not the final arbiter here. It is you, the city, the lead agency on the environmental study. DTSC is not CEQA, and it's not up to citizens to prove there's a problem, just there is the possibility. We've done more already than any reasonable citizen group should have to do to have its government act on behalf of health and safety, and the new data we have submitted to the attorney's office and you is also a changed circumstance under the FEIR, not in the FEIR, not in the environmental confirmation of 2014, and you cannot go forward without a proper environmental study of this off-site contamination. What's going on here? Is it because of the applicant? Is Stanford never wrong? Or is it just too much of an effort to do the proper job? There are good people in the city, exceptional people, those who created the online public records request system that I made use of, those who enabled me to have the staff report 11 days before the meeting rather than five two years ago, the sharp, straight-up Public Works employee who looked at the application and wrote back that this is not a technical correction, this is a revision, until she was overruled or made to change her mind. Until she was overruled or made to change her mind. Listen to what you have to tonight, get a sense of this project. Under no circumstances approve it. And continue it until a proper application comes before you and all the appropriate environmental documents are in. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Margaret Aronburn.
Good evening. Margaret Aronbrew, Amherst Street slash college terrace resident. And I wanted to speak briefly to the review process of the proposed subdivision as a minor amendment. I suggested the proposed amendment is not minor because it includes changing the size and location of 29 residential lots, the change in the park parcel, changing in the right-of-way width and location of the Amherst Street, that's the extension of the current street, and the addition of a new cul-de-sac. These cumulatively together, I do not believe could in any way be considered a minor amendment. I believe it should be expanded-- Subject to expanded review, which includes review by the Planning and Transportation Commission in a public hearing, which is how the original subdivision was reviewed. In addition, any conditions that are invoked by DTSC for construction on the parcels on the site, I believe should be amended into the city's original and master approval document rather than add it on to the building permits. It should be part of the permanent record for this approvals by the city of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we have any other speakers who wish to speak, they need to bring a card forward at this time. Our next speaker is Karina Chang.
Hello, I'm Karina Chang, born and raised on Amherst Street. I've all my life in college terraces. So we've been hearing about very complex issues. Put aside the TCE. You have a developer who's come before you, and they've said DTSC has approved this. I think we all agree that DTSC's criteria are completely separate from the criteria that a city council and the Planning and Transportation Commission and the fire department makes about the safety of its residents, the safety of the living conditions, and the liability the city holds for any future legal issues. So what we're looking at is, by the developer's admission, a change of 29 parcels. We are also seeing the addition of a new cul-de-sac, Amherst Court. You have to make a tight right-hand turn into that with a fire truck. The Bowden Court has also been changed, and its location has been changed slightly. Amherst-- The new Amherst Street has been made narrower. City council, when they spoke with the developer, requested that the developer put sidewalks in on both sides so that the pedestrians and the children would be safe. We now have a narrower street and no cross-section indicating the location of those sidewalks that the city has requested. And the council is being asked to summarily approve the changes without review by the Planning and Transportation Committee. The new Amherst Street also has a jog in it. And then when it meets up with the Amherst Court, when it has to make a 90-degree turn, the turning bulbout has been reduced, so there's less room. There also has not been proper notice provided for the review of this by the Planning and Transportation Commission. And we need the fire chief to sign off on this new plan with the new cul-de-sacs that are at 90-degree angles, the narrower roads, the narrower turning radiuses. So there's been inadequate review. DTSC criteria are completely independent of the criteria the city needs to consider. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Arthur Lieberman, to be followed by John Brooks.
Good evening, mayor and councilpeople. What's really needed for this-- For the college terrace neighbors and the health of the new residents is cleanup, not cover-up. I was the environmental committee chair for the Brown Park Association for a good number of years, and I learned of the many sites of underground TCE contamination in the Stanford Research Park. The absence of oversight by Stanford over the years resulted in the Hillview-Porter Regional Superfund Site, where hazardous chemicals reached Matadere Creek, led to the plume of underground contamination under the VA, and ultimately into much of Barren Park. There are a host of other DTSC mandated cleanup sites in the Research Park, identified by the names of companies who operated there. Teledyne Singer, Watkins Johnson, Coherent, Varian, Smith-Kline, Syntex, Teledyne Energy, and also at least two other Hewlett-Packard sites in addition to the 1601 California Avenue site and the playing fields underneath the Mayfield-- Playing Fields. There is ongoing remediation of the contamination at those places. There is pumping of groundwater, injection of oxidizing chemicals, and bioagents in an effort to enhance the cleanup. At the Teledyne Singer site on Porter Avenue-- On Porter-- There is where contamination has affected nearby properties, including the University Club. Consultants recently did subsurface thermal heating. They dug eight wells in an area where contamination stubbornly remained high and lowered electrical heating coils to heat the subsurface to essentially try to cook the contamination and decompose and break down the volatile organics. And the consultants at that site are now conducting soil vapor monitoring measurements. And indoor air vapor measurements are now required in one of Varian's buildings along Hanover Street by the DTSC. Many of these sites have been plating shops. Stanford allowed Varian and CPI to build a plating shop adjacent to residence in Barren Park, and the city then allowed CPI to rebuild their shop and load it up with lots of hazardous materials. Pushing through the Stanford plan on a contaminated site at 1601 California Avenue while ignoring the legitimate concerns of the neighboring college terrace folks smacks of repeating this pattern. Mayor Burt, when we talked about the CPI site, you said you would not want to live on the other side of the fence from a plating shop. Would you or any other councilperson want to live on top of a plume of TCE? The fact is that there's very significant contamination at this site. The issue is very complex. It's more complex than what the Stanford consultants say. They rely on models to tell you that contamination is contained, and there is no effect, and there is no concern outside the area, and no TCE fumes that reach out of the local area. The measurements by college terrace residents say that's not true. I believe data over model extrapolations. Prudence says you should put this project on pause until further measurements are made that would clarify the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Brooks, to be followed by Robert Moss.
Good evening, and thank you-- All right, that was quick. Good evening, all, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is John Brooks. I am a resident. My wife and I own a home at 1630 South California Avenue, directly across from Ground Zero, if you will. I don't have any formal comments prepared tonight, but I would like to reiterate what my neighbors and friends have said earlier, that there appear to be data that needs to be reviewed prior to any further development of this property. I noted with interest earlier, Vice Mayor Scharf commented that the council is data-driven and drills down on all issues. And I would ask, and we would ask respectfully, that you do that with this particular issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Moss, to be followed by our final speaker, Stephanie Munoz.
Thank you, Mayor Burt and councilmembers. As you probably know, I'm on the board of the Brown Park Association Foundation, which was assigned oversight of this area by the EPA in 1989. And we were given several large grants to monitor and keep an eye on what was going on there. So I'm very familiar with the site. And this particular project is not ready for prime time. Stanford has done a really terrible job of evaluating soil, groundwater, and looking at what kind of contamination might come into the residential buildings that were planned for this site. When Stanford says that there's been no change in the contamination level that's allowed, that is false. Three and a half years ago, EPA came in with a much lower level, .48 ppb, in any residential areas because exposure of a pregnant woman in the first trimester of pregnancy for as little as a week was highly likely to cause birth defects to the fetus. Of course, Stanford would like to ignore that, but those are the facts. Furthermore, any building, especially a residential building built on this site, should not have an underground basement. You can ask Lenny Siegel, there have been no buildings in the Mountain View MEW site built with underground garages since the mid-1990s. They don't do it in Mountain View. Why would we do it in Palo Alto? Second, we must have regular indoor air monitoring in the residential buildings for at least five years to verify, first of all, that the contamination has been stopped by soil vapor barriers and ventilation. I'll give you an example. In one of the projects in Mountain View, where they had soil vapor barriers and subslab ventilation, they tested the houses, and one of them, in less than a year after construction, had high levels of TCE because the barriers failed. So if you don't test, you don't know, and you may poison people. This project is not ready for prime time. It has to go back and be completely redone. Eliminate the underground garages, require both vapor barriers and constant evaporation of the soil and groundwater, and try to cure the damage in underground by eliminating the soil contamination. There's no evidence they're even thinking of that.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Stephanie Munoz.
Thank you, Mayor Burt and councilmembers. I'd like to express my appreciation as a Palo Alto taxpayers to all the naysayers who have come from other towns or from around. Because it seems to me it would be utter insanity for Palo Alto to permit anything but the very highest standard for residences free of industrial contamination. Every day, you pick up the newspaper or the magazine, and somebody wants to prosecute a lawsuit. Somebody is inviting the world to join in a suit for things that they didn't even know that had injured them. It would be-- I don't think-- All of you are just too smart for that. So thanks to them. However, I'd like to say that I hope you can figure out a way to do the project. It's a good project. I mean, in concept, it's a good concept. But-- And it's sort of a throwback problem. 50 years ago, 100 years ago, back when Stanford was founded and Palo Alto was founded to be a nice college town with a lot of residences and some stores, most of the income came from people-- The jobs came from elsewhere. They came from San Francisco or maybe from San Jose. I myself went to San Francisco my entire-- My school career on the Southern Pacific train. But the-- After the split neck, we were convinced that the previous idea of having industry separated from residences no longer applied because we could have clean industrial parks. And so the land that Stanford owned was changed in zoning from residences to industry because this clean industry was going to be compatible with residential use. Well, as it turns out-- Here's the problem-- It isn't all that compatible. But what I have to say is, when you get this finished, look then at the next phase of residences versus money-making opportunities, which is that the housing has to be near enough to the jobs or else have a train or mass production-- Mass transportation so that people can work without tying up the entire city in the motion of people to their jobs from other places. Do not let Stanford get away with not building housing for its hospital and doctor's offices and other residences. You need that balance of housing. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the applicant has the rebuttal time of three minutes. Excuse me.
I'd respectfully request a bit more rebuttal time, as I think several people should say a few comments, given the number of comments that have been made by college terrace folk. I can-- We can go as quickly as-- We can go quickly. Let me begin by starting with addressing the concern about our allegation that we're radically changing the site plan because 29 parcels are changing. The parcel changes are limited to the interior part of the site, i.e. the non-ARB review part of the site, i.e. the non-California Avenue frontage. They are driven by the need to densify the site, to move houses away from localized TCE areas, which is a conservative move. Also, we are not narrowing Amherst Street. That is a misread of the plan. Now, it said that-- This is not about Stanford being right or wrong or trying to get away with things. This is about the DTSC's review of the site, review of the plan, and Haley and Aldrich's sampling and investigation of it. Basically, the allegation has been made that DTSC has made mistakes in its application of standards. I would like DTSC to say a few words in response to that. And also, it basically has been alleged that Haley and Aldrich's sampling has been inadequate. I would like them to be able to respond to that quickly, too, if I may please. So first of all, it'd be Dr. Kimmy Klein, toxicologist from DTSC.
I'm Dr. Kimmy Klein. I'm the toxicologist assigned to this site. And I've been charged to review the health risk assessment portion of the reports that have been submitted to our department. And I've been asked to talk a little bit about the screening levels, and I presume that you're speaking of two sets of screening levels. So one set of screening levels has to do with what we expect to be the safe levels of TCE, in this case, in indoor air, that we would actually be breathing. And there are two different screening levels. One is .48 micrograms per meter cube, a small number. And that value represents the amount of TCE that you must breathe every day for your lifetime, for 30 years or so, in the same residence, 24/7, basically, 24/7. Although we do let you take a couple of days off for vacation a year. But basically, it's for your lifetime. I'd just say parenthetically that 30 years in one home is a pretty long time, but this is a very conservative assumption that we use within the regulatory agency. The second screening level is one-- Is two micrograms per meter cube, which is a larger number. And that number represents the amount of air-- The amount of TCE that could be in indoor air that would really trigger an action. That is to say, we would like to see something to be done about it. And the main reason for that is because of what was mentioned before. This is not valued based on the potential of getting cancer, but it is based on the potential of a cardiac defect in a young fetus in the first trimester of pregnancy. So that's two sets of-- That's one set of screening levels that deals with indoor air. There's another set of screening levels, which was also presented tonight, that represent the safe level, or we would say the acceptable level, of soil gas in soil that would not cause an increase in those levels in indoor air. So as you saw the cartoon before that was presented, there's soil gas down here, and through diffusion and then advection, it can get into indoor air. So we have a separate set of screening levels for soil gas. And those levels are much higher than those levels that I just-- than those levels that I just stated. And that's because we have to make the assumption about the molecules being able to get from depth to an area where by pressure differential between the indoor air and the soil can get into the indoors. And so those levels are 16 micrograms per cubic meter, 480, and the last numbers that were greeted with gasps, 1,100... 11,000 to 53,000 micrograms. The units are all the same for all three of these. So the difference... I just want to just say one thing. I don't see a little light here.
No, Dr. Klein, I've excluded your time from Stanford's rebuttal, given that you are representing the people of California.
Okay, thank you. I just want to state somewhat... The difference between the site-specific number that we consider safe at this site of 11,000 to 53,000 is because these other smaller numbers are based on the assumption that soil is made up of sands. That is to say, very permeable, very easily subjected to addictive forces, the forces of pressurization. And also, you can imagine the molecules more easily kind of diffusing through the sand than through a very dense clay, which is the case at 1601 South California. And that is really the difference... The reason for the difference in these values. So I'll give up my time, too. I think there's another speaker who wants to speak, but I'll be very happy to answer any questions later.
Thank you. We may have some. So now we'll continue with Stanford's time.
Good evening. I'm Susan Gallardo. I'm with Haley and Aldrich, environmental consultant on behalf of Stanford. I am a civil engineer. I've been an environmental practitioner for over 30 years. So I wanted to just speak a little bit about the sampling program that occurred at the 1601 California Avenue site. I think that there's been some questions about the adequacy of the investigation. So a site investigation is basically a phased process. We start with a historical review of all the information regarding former site operations and features. And then we go into a phased approach in terms of the sampling. Basically, what I mean by that, sometimes you find something unexpected that causes you to do additional sampling. And I think, as you know, sampling's been conducted at the site since 2004 with more of a focus between a timeframe of about 2013 to 2015. So during that time, just in terms of general inventory, there's been more than 118... Or I'm sorry, there's been 118 soil vapor probes that were installed at 51 locations. From those probes, there were 130 samples that were collected. Over time, so we got some temporal indication of what the data would look like. Shallow soil samples were collected during demolition at 16 locations, followed by 23 boarings that were installed down to depths of 35 feet or so. This doesn't include prior sampling locations that were extended down, actually, as far as about 60 feet at the site. And then there were over 500 samples that were taken. However, those were... Samples were associated with remediation of the PCB-impacted soil and not really the subject of our topic tonight. I think the council has in front of them over 900 pages of analytical data, 700-page report of the analyses. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now return to the council, and we need to make any disclosures of ex parte communications that we have had. Vice Mayor Scharf.
So I had a conversation with the applicant today. I didn't learn anything that hasn't been already discussed in either the applicant's discussion or by staff.
Councilmember Berman.
I had a brief phone call with the applicant today, and I didn't learn anything that isn't in the public record.
Councilmember Holman.
I had a brief conversation with, I think, just one member of the public, and it was about a letter that had been submitted, so the information is contained.
Councilmember Wolbach.
I had two conversations with the applicant, one several months ago and one yesterday about this, but nothing that's not in the record.
And I had a conversation with Jean McCowen from the applicant's side, as well as Lenny Siegel from the community. So we will now continue with returning to the council for discussion. Councilmember Holman.
Well, can I first just address the procedural issue here? Because this is... The subject has been raised, and I have the question, too, having served especially several years on the Planning and Transportation Commission. It seems to me if there are changes to streets and 29 buildings relocated, it seems to me that that should have to go back to the ARB and to the Planning and Transportation Commission, which is also... The project is... I mean, it's here for a subdivision map act. And shouldn't we also have to go to the Planning Commission for that? So I want to start out with just the procedural question because I'm confused why we're doing the process we are.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman, Kara Silver, Senior Assistant City Attorney. So the reason why we are at this juncture is because the tentative subdivision map has already been approved, and the final map has already been approved by the council. So once the final map has been approved and recorded, there are two ways to amend the final map. The first way is to really make technical minor corrections. And that was the procedure that Mr. Ballin had indicated in his opening remarks that he thought was improper. And we do agree that this situation does not fit within that statutory procedure. There is a second way, though, to amend a final map. And that goes directly to the council. There is not a requirement that it go to the Planning and Transportation Commission. And the council needs to make the four findings that are in the staff report. And basically, it's... You know, the bulk of the finding is, are there changed circumstances, as Director Gettleman mentioned in her opening remarks.
So what about ARB and circulation? Because the roadway... At least one roadway has changed, and circulation on the site has thus changed. And the ARB is supposed to look at not only building design, which they're not doing here, but layout, site layout, and circulation. So that isn't happening here either.
So this, of course, is governed by the development agreement and the particular ARB rules applicable to this site. And the way the application only requires ARB review of the outer area, the California Avenue fronting sites. And so because this particular reconfiguration does not touch that area, it was determined it didn't need to go back to ARB for review.
The application doesn't require it? Or the development agreement didn't require it?
The application for the new layout does not touch the California Avenue frontage.
I was trying to get at... So is it the development agreement that determines that only the perimeter buildings get reviewed? Or is it the application? I was...
I see. It's the development agreement that incorporates a... That specifies a particular zoning code standard in ARB review.
And would that apply also to any changes to the streets for circulation? And did fire look at... Do we have a difference of opinion here about whether something changed or not in terms of street width or configuration? Did the fire department look at it? And did... What about ARB and the circulation?
I'll defer to Jody on that one.
Yes, the fire department has reviewed the amendment to the subdivision. They signed off on the review pretty quickly and were not even given the resubmital plans. So they were fine with the revisions.
I don't think we had anything that indicated that, unless I overlooked it. There's a lot of documentation. So it's possible. Did we have anything that demonstrated that?
Working with the fire department is part of our regular planning review process. I have a lot of paperwork as well, so I'd have to dig through and find it for you.
Mayor Burton, so I have several questions. So let me just hit a few and then come back. Or I mean, I don't want to take up so much time and...
You know, I realize that I actually need to take a break to be able to confer with staff on a procedural issue. So let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, Thank you. So I know that Councilmember Holman has some more questions, but let's go ahead and proceed. Councilmember Berman.
You have to give me a second to get back in the mindset. I had a couple of questions, some of which have been addressed. But one had to do with this issue of horizontal migration that was raised by, I think it was Mr. Siegel. And, you know... I mean, I guess what is the applicant's response to concerns that horizontal migration of these vapors might be occurring at this site? And, you know, I guess what does staff think about that as well? But let me start with the applicant.
Hi. I get to go where I left off. So we, you know, through our investigation, we did an extensive evaluation of what we call a lithology, or the types of soils beneath the site. And our results actually indicated that the vapors were pretty much where we would have expected them to be, given the fact that we had the vapors, because they were in the coarser-grained units. But the...
I'm sorry, they were in the what?
The sandy or the coarser-grained units. But we're not... You know, in some cases, where we had a lot of the finer-grained clay soils, we actually couldn't even get flow out of those samples. So with respect to kind of the lateral migration, unlike the figure that's been up on the screen, we actually have surrounded the locations where we have the vapor. And something that's important to understand is that the release of the TCE... And something that's important to understand is that the release of the TCE likely occurred at least about three decades ago, because the suspect feature, a sump where TCE, again, where we understand that it was released, was not in use past that time. So our feeling is that what we're seeing out at the site are basically steady-state conditions. And again, as you saw, along California Avenue, we didn't have concentrations of concern with respect to the vapor.
Thanks. Does staff have any follow-up?
Thank you, counsel. You know, we, of course, reviewed the materials from the applicant's experts and found them to be logical, but I would defer to the state representative from DTSC in terms of their evaluation of that material. They did find, you know, they did evaluate the risk assessment and accept the conclusion. So my presumption is that they agree that this is not a condition of concern.
Okay. And then, just so I get an understanding of exactly what's before us today and what council can do, I mean, there are process issues and concerns about whether or not this should have gone back to ARB and some of those issues that I'm sure we'll talk about. But in addition to that, what, I mean, does, what is within our purview here? Do we have the ability to require additional mitigation, you know, require Stanford do certain things to, you know?
Well, you know, the, just in summary, you know, we've put before you a proposed record of land use action. I think it is possible that you could add some findings and further stipulations to that record of land use action. In fact, we got a late letter from Mr. Ross that we haven't had an opportunity yet to respond to. One of the issues he raises is about comprehensive plan consistency. I think in response to that comment, we would suggest to the council that we add to the record of land use action a reference back to the record of land use action at the time the tentative map was approved, because there's a detailed explanation there that is not in the current materials. So I think the council does have a potential to add to this record of land use action. And we have some suggestions about conditions that you could add to reflect the agreement on Stanford's part to undertake certain mitigation measures. But I'm sure Stanford, the applicant, would be happy to consider other questions from the council, and at the end of that process, we could review the record of land use action and talk about potential additions.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
Thank you. So, trying to wrap my head around this in a sort of larger thing. So what I got from staff, I, what is it? It's the memo that was written in response to, I guess, Mr. Baylen's concerns, and it was signed by yourself and the city manager. Mr. Baylen, yes, correct. So what I took out of that memo, and I want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly, is that we're looking at the narrow issue of whether or not to approve the subdivision, the subdivision amendment, MAP Act amendment, and that that regards seven homes, which would be moved off of the site, off of the hotspot site. And that DTSC has looked at that specific issue and said, "That is the right thing to do." And that, is that, is that correct?
DTSC has looked at the risk assessment and all of the suggestions that Stanford made. So that's relocating the homes, it's the 10-inch slab, it's the vapor intrusion barriers and other measures that were included as suggestions in that risk assessment. So DTSC, in my understanding, looked at the whole, some total, and concurred that if all of these things took place, that the risk was acceptable.
Is the DTSC person here?
Yes.
Dr. Klein.
Dr. Klein? Is that DTSC person, or?
Yes.
So I just want, is it all right if I ask some questions, the DTSC person? You can all, if it's up to me with the mayor. Okay, no, that's very helpful. So my guess of this, and I'm not that familiar with it, DTSC is the state agency that deals with making, with toxic substances, right? Department of Toxic Substances, right?
Yeah, I'm Mark Pyros. I'm the unit chief who's responsible for the South Bay counties, including Santa Clara County. And with the cleanup program, what we address is anywhere where there's been releases or suspected releases of hazardous substances is the jurisdiction of our cleanup program. And of course, DTSC also has a hazardous management program, which has to do with the day-to-day management of hazardous waste.
Okay, so what we've been asked to do is to approve a subdivision MAP Act change, which is moving those houses. DTSC has looked at that and said that that's the appropriate thing to do?
Yes, we did look at that, and yes, we concurred that those were the appropriate, that those were the appropriate measures to make, and that they were kind of above and beyond what they could have agreed to do. They have, for example, there's the slab that's going to be underlying these residences are, it's going to be a very thick slab, and they're going to be under tension, so they will be very resistant to cracking. If you had a slab that cracked, of course, then you can imagine that there could be some molecules, if present in the subsurface soil, could creep up through the slab and into indoor air spaces. And so that was one item that we were very pleased with, that they were going to put under the residences a thicker slab that was under tension, that would be very resistant to cracking over time. And the other thing that they are doing is they're putting in a vapor barrier, which is a sprayed-on vapor barrier that is, is designed to prevent penetration of molecules of TCE up through that barrier and then into the slab and then up. Another thing I just want to point out is that in our risk, in the risk assessment that was performed, we, I think it was mentioned in your form, in the formal presentation, that the soil vapors plume is actually very deep. It is not close to the surface, but it's rather deep. But in addition, the risk assessment assumed that depth, but in the development, actual development, there is going to be an additional fill, or I think this has already been put in place, I'm not sure, of 10 to 15 feet of compacted dirt, that engineered fill that is going to also prevent, provide a deeper cap than was assumed in the risk assessment. So for all those reasons, for these different lines of evidence, we concurred, I should say, the human and ecological risk division part of DTSC concurred with those recommendations.
And what I understood from the staff report was that there could be, that the building permit wouldn't be issued by our department until there was a no-action issue, no-action letter issued by DTSC.
Okay, and that's one point I'd like to clarify, because I think the site actually, we're seeing it as two distinctly different areas. There's the area that's where developments proposed, that's been addressed by the, well, the area primarily addressed by the risk assessment. And a determination was made there, but you also have the area of significant impact. And in the approval letter, well, it was the supplemental investigation or risk assessment report, in our approval letter, we specifically stated that that area, you know, DTSC had to approve the measures proposed for that area, so that area remains to be addressed.
So that's what I was trying to understand, is that you're still, is that you're still looking at this, and that no building permit will be issued until you're satisfied? That's what I took out of the staff report. I just wanted to make sure that was correct, and maybe it's not.
Yeah, if I could clarify our statement, my understanding is that the area where DTSC is still, needs to agree to management controls, the land use, is the open space area where those hotspots occur. And that what we were suggesting as staff is one way for us, the city, to ensure that all of this reaches a conclusion expeditiously, is to say that we will withhold issuing building permits for the seven homes that are closest to those hotspots. That's something we would impose, not DTSC.
Okay, got it. Okay, so we would impose that.
Okay.
Do you think that's an appropriate thing to impose, then? I mean?
Yes.
Okay. You know, this is difficult, because obviously, none of us up here are experts in this area. So, and you know, we obviously have a concern of safety, both for the Stanford residents who'd be there, for the College Terrace residents. Is there any, is there any reason why we wouldn't do this? Why we wouldn't make those changes from a safety perspective?
I'm sorry, can you, specifically which changes are you?
Is there any reason why we wouldn't approve the subdivision MAP changes tonight, for instance? For, is there any reason we wouldn't do that, that would enhance safety? I mean, is, that's the real question.
Not that I can think of. No, because the risk assessment, like I say, did address the proposed development area, and the other area of significant impact still remains to be addressed.
And then, Mr. Siegel raised the issue of putting in the pipe that goes up that takes out the, you know, the vapor, basing and concentrates it, I guess, and distributes it up into the sky, and thought that was a, that's what I took out of his presentation of what he thought should be done. And that's obviously not one of the requirements that you've imposed. And so, obviously, he said he spoke with you, so I guess I wanted an understanding of why, why that is not the appropriate solution, or why it wasn't imposed, or your reaction to that.
Well, why it was not imposed is, based on the findings of the risk assessment, that we didn't conclude that there is a significant risk in the area. Now, as Mr. Siegel pointed out, what he was discussing is something that is addressed in the DTSC guidance. And the primary difference, you know, between what Stanford is proposing and what Mr. Siegel is proposing, well, Stanford is proposing a barrier to keep the TC from migrating upward into buildings, but what Mr. Siegel is suggesting is basically, would be a layer, the addition of a layer under that barrier, or something to, basically, you're ventilating out underneath the barrier, is, well, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lenny, but I think that's the primary difference, is he's proposing some, basically, the addition of a layer underneath to give the TCA, TCE, any TCE, well, here, we're talking in an area that we determined is relatively low levels of TC, but any TC that migrates upward, give it a pathway to be ventilated out from underneath the building. But again, why we didn't impose is because we determined, you know, based on our risk assessment, we didn't determine there was a significant risk in that area.
Okay, so you didn't impose it because you didn't think there was a significant risk in the area?
Yes.
All right, and then, so briefly, I guess when I looked at this report, and thank you very much for your responses, those were helpful. What I took out of the staff report is that, and I guess I didn't see the connection between approving this tonight and what's going on in College Terrace. I guess, and I guess, I just wanted to make sure that I understood it correctly, and that staff is basically saying, there is no connection, that Mr. Baylen's sampling, Baylen's sampling, and the information that is helpful to DTSC in terms of any mitigation plan they may come up with, or what may go on in College Terrace, but there's no really relationship between what we're asked to do tonight and the issues with the College Terrace neighborhood.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Scharf. Again, you know, I think it's potentially an issue of real concern, you know, we're looking forward to see, seeing how DTSC evaluates the data that Mr. Baylen and the neighbors have submitted to them. But based on what we understand to be the characterization of the soil composition on the site, and the evaluation of the risk assessment by DTSC in their conclusions, we don't see the connection between what may or may not exist onsite and the off-site locations.
Okay, thank you.
And again, you know, we are, we're laypeople, if you wanted to put the question to the experts retained by Stanford or to DTSC, I think the council could do so.
All right, I'll put the question, if it's all right with you, to DTSC, the question I just asked.
Hello, my name is Jovan Villamater. I'm the project manager with the Department of Toxic Substances Control. And is there a specific question that you?
Yeah, the specific question was that, is what we're asked to do tonight, which is approve the subdivision MAP Act, I just saw no connection between doing that and the concerns in College Terrace. My understanding is College Terrace neighbors have submitted to DTSC their samples, their information, and I guess I wanted to, I saw no connection between the two, but if I'm missing something, I'm not an expert in this area, and staff says they're not either, is there a connection between the two, or they run on separate tracks, or what happens?
Okay, yeah, no problem. So from DTSC's perspective, we have two things going on here. We have the site, and whether or not the site has been characterized and the risk assessment has been, is accurate for what, how the site is right now. And there is a concern about whether or not there is an impact on the neighboring community. At this point in time, we do have the information from the community, and we are still evaluating it, and we intend to respond to their report via comments and questions and just a general dialogue to understand how their study was conducted. However, I do not know, I do not think that whatever we discover in the neighborhood would impact the decision already made on the site. So if we were to find out that there was an impact, there is an impact on the neighborhood, we would figure out a way to try to mitigate what's going on, but I do not see that impacting the decision made, that there is no significant risk with respect to the development that was planned.
And approving this would in no way be a negative for the neighborhood, impact them in a worse way, or make things worse, or anything like that?
I do not see that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Oh, he wants to...
One thing I'd just like to add, too, as far as this being a separate issue, not saying it's, the detections in College Terrace are separate from the site, I don't think that was by any means what we were trying to convey. It's not, the, we don't see a connection between the proposed housing development and what's detected. So like I said, I just want to make that distinction, we're not saying it's a separate issue from the site, that we're saying it is potentially a site-related issue. Okay, so I just want to make that clarification.
No, that's helpful, thank you.
So while you're here, I'd like to ask a follow-up question on the same subject. So we have a boundary that's been established on the periphery of the contamination on the site. And then we had an understanding, or an assertion that the clay soils presented horizontal barriers from that area where it's contaminated to beyond there. But then we've recently seen that we have contamination across the street in College Does that imply that the clay separation may not be continuous at all locations from the boundaries that we found of the contamination on the site to beyond those boundaries?
Yeah, and actually, what's been, with the investigation that's been done, there has been some variability found in the soil, although I think it is, well, I won't say it's clay, but usually you talk about finer-grain, you know, silvery clay soils, so that it is predominantly finer-grained soils have been found on the site, but there has been some variability observed. The other thing is, too, is with soil gas, anytime you have contamination of soil gas, the other thing is there is potential for preferential pathways, you know, whether you have utilities that have base rock bedding around, that I'm not saying that that's necessarily the case here. I think what's been found at the site is where you have relatively, well, it's still finer-grained soils, but you know, maybe a little bit more permeability, that it tends to travel along those channels. So as far as just saying it's all clay and it's just this, you know, it's clay and it's, that's, you know, maybe overly simplifying it.
Well, that's actually what I assumed, and from just a general understanding of the way that we have kind of various versions of, we'll call them subterranean streams, but not quite streams in this area.
Exactly.
I was trying to find it in our packet, and I regret I couldn't, and I'm sure it's in the EIR, but the sampling that was done outside of the boundary area, along the, what I'll call the southeast edge of California Avenue, the edge that's part of the site, how extensively did we sample everything in between the areas where contamination was found onsite and the California Avenue edge of the project?
Okay, I may have to defer to someone else on that, whether Jovan or Susan? I'm sorry, I'm not the technical person on it, so I might have to defer to somebody else on it.
Hi, I'd like to talk, have my colleague also maybe address a question that you're asking about the relationship between the site and what the College Terrace study has found so far. But there was a figure, that was actually a Haley and Aldrich figure, that was put up here previously, that showed... was put up here previously, that showed the area where we have the higher concentrations of TCE at the 1601 California Avenue site, and then showed the boring locations between that area and California Avenue, so I don't know if that would be helpful to put that back up.
Yeah, if that can be pulled back up, that'd be great. I don't know if anybody knows where it is.
I think that was one of the Publix graphics that was in our presentation.
Okay, then we'll wait and ask.
Meanwhile, if it's okay, I'll have my colleague talk about the relationship with the sampling.
Hi, my name is Peter Scarmelon, I'm with Haley and Aldrich. So there was a preliminary data, a preliminary screening done at College Terrace, and I think there was 21 homes that were sampled, and there was TCE detected, but that's, oh, I'd say a preliminary screening, and it's a big leap then to take that data and make conclusions that it's related to the site. We don't know anything about the buildings when they were sampled.
You say, I'm sorry, let me pause there. You say that's a big leap. So, we had a source on the site, a former HP underground sump, and it's the only known source of TCE in that immediate area.
Correct.
There could have been incidental dumping on soils in past decades in addition to the sump. But when we see TCE including in the sub-basement areas, I can, I can understand an assertion that we don't have definitive proof that it is from that location, but I don't understand the assertion that it's a big leap to think that it very well may be from that.
TCE is a very common chemical. It's detected all over the South Bay, and sites in Palo Alto, Mountain View throughout. It's also in consumer products that are still used today. It's not just associated with R&amp;D facilities like this one, and semiconductors, but also automotive repairs.
We don't have any automotive repairs here, and we found it in, in the, it was found in the crawl space, and not just in the homes. So, that implies it's not from any consumer products that may have been used there or otherwise, that it's coming from the soil. So, I, I'm really, I want to make sure we have a conversation that is not based upon hypotheticals that really aren't well-founded.
Right, so, so I just, just to kind of, the hypothetical, not well-founded, so, you know, we've looked at the information that's been generated, and we're not questioning the fact whether TCE was detected or not, but right now, in terms of establishing a relationship between the site and what has been detected in College Terrace neighborhood, is what we don't know. So, for instance, you know, as Pete mentioned, TCE is actually found in a number of consumer products. We don't have any information about where the samples were taken relative to what potentially could be in a home. So typically, when you do an indoor air sampling program, one of the things that you do is you actually do take an inventory of the products that you have in your home.
Yeah, but, okay, but, just a sec. So first, my questions were originally directed DTSC, so I'm going to want to return to them in a moment, but that seems to be ignoring the crawl space issue, and that's what I had already referred to. And either way, I would be comfortable with an assertion that there has not been able to be established a correlation. I'm very uncomfortable with an assertion that it's a big leap to think there might be, and I'll just make that as a personal statement, and I'd like to return to the DTSC. So, as the objective third party who is acting in the interests of the people, not an applicant and not any particular appellant, but as scientists looking at this as objectively as possible, are you able to think that there could very well be a correlation between the original sump site and what has been found across the street, or do you think that that is a remote possibility?
Actually, I think the way you just stated it actually characterized it pretty well, that, you know, given the site, you know, the proximity of the site, that you can't discount that the site has a potential source of that, and I think the thing that you just stated, that the correlation hasn't been established, so that I think the way you just characterized it, I agree with how you just actually stated it.
Thank you. Okay, great. Yes, Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, if I could just follow up that discussion with the DTSC. In our material, we received two notes that the DTSC sent to the College Terrace Group and the Public Environment Oversight Group on March 18th. And in the one to the Public Environment Oversight Group, there is the section on page seven that says, "Data collected at the site adequately characterize the extent of migration of soil vapor. Thus, no additional sampling is necessary." Down below, it says, "Investigation data consistently indicate the absence of TCE above screening levels outside of the operational area of 1601 South California." And that is defined as the residential area is more than 200 feet east of California and does not extend to California Avenue. On page two of the response to the College Terrace Association, there's the sentence that says, "Data collected at the California Avenue parcels demarcate the extent of soil vapor impacted by TCE. Based on the sampling and subsequent evaluation conducted by the state, soil vapor with TCE at concentrations exceeding screening levels occurs more than 200 feet east of California Avenue and does not extend to California Avenue." Now, those are pretty clear definitive statements, and that's the material we have to base our decision on. So let me ask again, do you think it would be appropriate for councilmembers, depending upon experts from the state, to endorse a zoning map based upon those kind of statements, or should we wait for your objective expertise on the information that has come from the California residents west of California Avenue?
Okay, well, I think as far as the decision on the site, I mean, the data that you have from, well, and I think as far as making a decision on the zoning map, it's based on data from the site. And, you know, that's the data that we have at this point, so, well.
But you clearly extrapolated and said, "We do not need to do further sampling." So the further sampling has opened up a...
Okay. You know, and at the time, with the data we had, that was, we felt that that was the correct conclusion. Well, and I think Ms. Galardo mentioned, and went during her talk, that sometimes investigation can be an iterative thing, because when you do investigation, you're never going to have 100% certainty. In fact, I think there's a U.S. EPA guidance that specifically states that, that there's a lot of professional judgment involved.
Yeah.
And at the time, we believed, well, the thing is, we thought that it was fairly well delineated. Now, of course, with the, yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't state that, as I should, lost my train of thought. So anyhow, as far as the results we just got from the sampling by, you know, the College Terrace residents, that's new information, which of course, we have to consider.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure that the proposed residential development has a lot of bearing with, you know, with any investigation or follow-up evaluation that needs to occur to address that, to address the results that have been found in College Terrace.
Right, but that was one of the fundamental questions that was asked at the beginning.
Well, and one of the other things I mentioned, there is the area of significant impact, chemical impact, which still remains to be addressed, that we need to make a final determination on what's going to occur there. And at the least, we're anticipating land use restrictions, but we do need to, well, in the response to Mr. Siegel's group, I think we did state that there was going to be a summary document that discussed the basis for the action, so that we are anticipating that there is going to be, you know, we, like I say, at the least, land use restrictions, but we do need to consider whether other actions need to be taken. So we're not done with that area. And I mean, that's
Great, yeah.
The primary area where the problem appears to have originated.
Yeah. Good, thank you very much.
Can I try to rephrase Councilmember Schmidt's question slightly? Do you think that the, if you verify the sampling on the west side of California Avenue, that it may cause you to want to have additional information about the site itself as a result of potentially finding TCE that may have come from the 1601 source?
Well, I think you mentioned just a minute ago about establishing a correlation, and I think potentially to establish that correlation, there may be some sampling that may need to occur to establish that correlation.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Scharf.
So, Mayor Burt's question, the way I understood it, and I just want to hone in and make sure I understand it correctly, was if that, if the sampling shows that there is TCE on the other side, and that does show a correlation, would that change any recommendations you have for this particular changes that you, that we're making in terms of the map? What's before us tonight? Or would you come back and say, "We shouldn't have made these map changes because something else?" I mean, that's really the question before us, is should we make these map changes?
No.
Or not?
No, because even if we were able to establish a correlation, we would have to find ways to mitigate the exposure across the street, but it would not change the data that actually has been collected at the 1601 site. So no, we would not be changing our determination based on what has been proposed as the layout in that risk assessment.
Okay. So nothing, any correlation you find or anything else wouldn't change the layout, which is what we're asked to do tonight, was to look at the layout?
We do not do that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
So, I appreciate this line of questioning, and I have a few others, but I'm going to stay focused on follow-up, which is what I put my light in. So if there's not a correlation, you said it's not a separate issue earlier, but if it's...
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, let's just say that the resident side, the California Avenue neighborhood side, if you do your response, your work and your response to what's been done so far, and let's say that indicates there needs to be more testing done, where I'm trying to link these up or not, is while I can see the logic of it doesn't have anything to do with the layout of the project on the east side, but if we approve, and this is more of a question for staff, I guess, but if we approve the project on the east side, and there's mitigation, and more testing needs to be done on the west side, who pays? And that's the, that's the link that I'm wondering if it exists, because if we, if we've already approved the Stanford project, and mediation needs to be done, mitigation needs to be done, who pays for that?
Well, a little outside my area of expertise, but I think it's not just a question of whether the testing proves accurate in finding TCE above the thresholds, but then can a correlation be established between what is found offsite and this site, or some other source? And then that would determine whose responsibility.
Yeah. So, can I try and answer that? Councilmember Holman, let me, let me just try and answer your question. The responsible party will pay either way, or be pursued either way, and that we can let the experts from DTSC, because that's actually their expertise rather than our staff.
Well, yeah, but I guess my question is, so would the neighbors have to, let's just say there is a correlation, who knows? None of us know exactly at this point in time, but let's just say there is a correlation established, do the neighbors have to sue to get the mitigation done? What's the mechanism? How does that happen so the neighbors aren't just on the hook for mitigating and remediating what they find on their site? Presumably, there's a connection found.
And I think it depends on, well, basically, what's the mechanism that it's getting there by? Because one thing I think we have to look at is, are there any preferential pathways? And, you know, I think if there are some preferential pathways, we may ask Stanford to do something in that regards. If it's another source, we'd have to, well, the state always has the option of taking enforcement action if necessary, you know, anytime anybody's responsible party.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, say, well, and I don't know that there is another source, it sounds like this has been residential area for a long time, but, you know, say hypothetically speaking, if there was another source, you know, we do have mechanisms of pursuing action by anybody that's caused contamination.
Okay, so there doesn't have to be a linkage, it's like, if somebody's discovered and there needs to be a mitigation, remediation, that can be enacted by your entity without cost to, in this case, let's say homeowners?
Well, we can pursue action. And, you know, and I won't say...
Tell me what that means, be more specific, pursuing action, what does that mean?
Well, you know, and I think we're talking, you know, it's hard for me to generalize, you know, without, because it can vary specifically, but, you know, say that if you do have, anytime there is a contaminated site, or, you know, DTSC has established that somebody's caused a release, we do have enforcement authority. And like I said, that's speaking very, you know, generally, that's...
And Councilmember Holman, I think it's an important distinction that that, and I'll ask the DTSC folks to confirm my understanding, but that's independent of land use action. It's not contingent on it, it's not actually even related to it. We may wish it were, but it's not.
And that's what I was trying to determine.
That's what I was trying to tell you.
And the, and the other thing that I wanted to ask you, if I could please, is that, let's just say, because it's been mentioned a couple or three times, it was written somewhere, and all the stuff that we have to read, that, you know, this is, you know, these chemicals are found in paint and all kinds of different things, but some of the levels that have been, at least preliminarily, discovered in the residential properties, how much, it's very abnormal, like, how much, let's just use something, paint, how much paint would one have to have onsite to cause those, those levels of testing results? And I'm not asking for like 72 gallons or 15,000 gallons, I mean, it's like, is it reasonable to think that a residential property could have that much of something that would contain those TCEs to create that kind of a reading?
I don't think it takes much, and I think actually, Mr. Siegel, I think you mentioned, you know, one case where somebody with gun cleaner, and I think, I believe it was a site in San Leandro, where I think gun cleaner was also the culprit, so that's, you know, one example I can give you, that if somebody goes to clean their gun, and they're using gun cleaner, it can, there wasn't, in the case of one DTSC site in San Leandro, there was a significant detection, and that was what it was attributed to, was the person that was using gun cleaner in the residence.
And that was a significant reading?
Yes. It was above the screening, human health risk-based screening level.
Okay. I have a couple of other questions, but they aren't related to this specific thing.
I just want to interject one thing, and that was when I talked about the screening levels in indoor air, they are very low, right? .48 micrograms per cubic meter in the, in two. And really, doesn't take very much of a consumer product. You could open a marking pen, and in the vicinity of where the measurement is being taken, and you could possibly see enough of that stuff coming off of a marking pen that would impact the measurement. With respect to TCE, TCA is not only found in gun cleaner or in automotive products, which you said really wouldn't be around, but you would also find it in rug cleaners and arts and crafts, adhesives, so there, it is really pretty predominant in a lot of products, so, just...
But can I quickly ask, does the presence in the crawl space significantly imply a different source?
I think that the crawl space issue is one that we can't answer specifically because one of the questions that I would have is, were, what is the configuration of that crawl space? Could it ever have been used as a storage area that, you know, somebody would just...
For marking pens, or whatever?
No, for paint thinners, well, actually, that's not, that's not a good example, but rug cleaners, or, you know, I don't know. I'm just saying that I don't know, but that was one of the questions that we have, about whether there was any use to those crawl spaces.
So, that's the distinction I would make between hypothetical possibilities, and what I was referring to was implication. And my question was, when we have a series of homes with it in the crawl space, does that provide an implication that it's not probably from those home usages? Not a proof, an implication.
Well, like I mentioned, I think we cannot discount the data or the sampling results that have been presented to us, and the possibility of the site being a source. Again, you know, as we talked about, we have to establish the correlation, but, you know, seeing it in the crawl space, I think it's, well, there was one home we saw that there was nothing detected in the crawl space, and in the indoor airspace, we, you know, we see a detection, which to me, that's a little suspect, you know, to me suggests the source may be indoor, where if you're seeing the crawl space, yeah, I think there is a poss, there is a possibility it may be coming from the subsurface.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolbach?
So, I guess there's a, really a couple of key questions here that kind of fall under the broader category of, you know, how much do we want to apply the precautionary principle here, right? How much do we want to be very risk averse, potentially to the degree of preventing any action, versus how much do we want to move forward in the face of risk and potentially cause harm to residents? So, that's kind of how I'm looking at this. And I guess the two areas of concern, as a couple of my colleagues, I think, have mentioned this, is one is onsite and the other is off-site, right? So, on the proposed development and also in the neighboring residences in college terraces. So, let me start with onsite questions and concerns. We've had some discussion about the remediation, the mitigation efforts proposed by Stanford, one of which is moving the properties, right? Properties are being moved to increase safety to residents on the future site, correct? Okay. So, that's, that's a positive step towards increasing safety in the face of TCE contamination on-site. There is a proposed vapor barrier and a significant slab, as well as some extra dirt or extra soil, so a number of remediation efforts that have been proposed by the applicant to increase safety for future residents on the site. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that, after all the discussion we've had. There is a suggestion from some that we go a step further, which is to include sub-slab depressurization or ventilation, either passive or active, you know, ventilation. And that's been proposed, it's been discussed this evening, the applicant has not planned to include that, DTSC says that it's not necessary, but I would be curious to hear whether that would include any exorbitant cost, whether that's something that, you know, in addition to the remediation efforts already proposed, if that's something that the applicant had considered, or if it's something that was novel and suggested to the applicant only recently, so that they just hadn't thought about it, or if they've gone through thinking about, well, maybe we should put in some sub-slab depressurization or ventilation, and it's just way too expensive. So, I'm just curious what, you know, how much that's been considered at this point by the applicant.
It definitely has been considered prior to Mr. Siegel's suggestions of it. He has often referred to, well, if it's good enough for Mountain View, it's good enough for Palo Alto. The area of Mountain View where this is primarily being applied, the geologic situation there, conditions are very, very different from the conditions at our site. There's shallow groundwater there, there's a very large groundwater plume there. So, DTSC commented earlier that what we are proposing is above and beyond, above and beyond what typically is proposed, with the 10-inch post, 10-inch thick post-tensioned slabs and the vapor barrier on top of moving the houses. Because it's our preference to, you know, go that far, but not put in a system that requires ongoing maintenance by our faculty, and because of the extra comfort provided by the above and beyond we are doing, that is where we are at at this point.
And how much, just sort of maybe a ballpark of, you know, how much-
It's not a cost issue.
So, it's not a cost issue?
Absolutely not a cost issue.
Okay.
There's very significant cost in the foundations we're doing and the vapor barriers we're doing. It's absolutely not a cost issue.
So, if it's not a cost issue, and it would increase comfort for those of us on the council, and on staff, and in the community, concerned about the safety of future residents, if it's not a cost issue, is it something that the applicant could still consider adding in addition to those measures which have already been discussed and proposed?
If we were to consider it, it would frankly be at our discretion, because it is a, yeah, that's, yeah, because our feeling is, is that it is a comfort perception, it is not necessary on top of the mitigations already built into our assembly.
Okay. Thank you for your clear response on that. I will have to consider that, that response. And then on neighborhood safety, the other big area of concern here. So, let me be clear, you know, I'm, I'm still, you know, I think we're all thinking about these various mitigation efforts, what the, what the right path forward is, and I do want to say, I do recognize that the purpose of us hearing this tonight, the purpose of the reorganization of the plan is to increase safety. So, I do want to give you credit for, and the applicant credit for doing that. The question is, is it enough? Do we want to go further, especially if cost isn't the primary issue? As for neighborhood safety, we've had, you know, a lot of discussion about how we can't say for sure that any TCE detected at neighboring properties is necessarily a result of TCE at this property. And I don't know that that's even really the relevant question for tonight. The question for tonight, for me at least, is, you know, if we allow this project to move forward tonight, and construction continues on this site, and at a later time, it is identified hypothetically, as is a possibility still, that horizontal movement of TCE from this site may cause TCE contamination at neighboring properties, if we allow this project to move forward, would that in any way inhibit or preclude future mitigation efforts to isolate or remove the TCE at this site? So, basically, are we closing any doors in the future if this construction moves forward? Because that's, I think, my biggest concern. I want to make sure that, you know, whatever happens on this site, that we don't, you know, does adding the homes on top of the property mean that it's harder to do in the future some kind of additional barriers to prevent horizontal transmission? Does it prevent future opportunities for a deeper cleanup if that's deemed necessary in the future, in order to provide additional safety for neighboring residents?
Okay. For, with respect to the onsite development, if there is a correlation made, and considering we have removed the source of TCE from the site itself-
The sump itself.
The sump itself, correct.
Right.
We don't see how it would, I mean, and considering it had happened about approximately 30 years ago, we don't see any of the data that we've collected so far changing if we were to do additional data. So, that being said, we don't see how, if you were to, I don't see us adding additional measures, I should say, to be more protective, because we don't anticipate any difference, changes in the data that we've already collected.
Okay. So, that's reassuring, but my question is a little bit different. It is, it is a little bit of a hypothetical, and, you know, perhaps it's not, you know, it's perhaps a little bit of hypothetical, but, you know, if we did determine in the future that, you know, the TCE that is remaining on-site, as there is some, if we determine in the future that some horizontal transmission of that might be going across the street or going to adjacent properties and creating a contamination at those other properties, would the addition, would the construction of these, these homes prevent future cleanup or future horizontal barriers?
Yeah, that's nuanced, though.
Yeah, I, I think in this case, if anything was to be done, it'd have to be focused in the area of significant impact. And that's usually, anytime you do a site cleanup, you're usually going to target the source or, well, sometimes, the term secondary source is used too, where basically where you have, you know, remaining, you know, high levels of contamination. And I think, you know, as far as, as you get out, you know, we're talking about seeing maybe some exceedances of the screening level, but in terms of remediation, you look at potential remedial methods, for the type of, TC, the type of contaminant, contaminant we have here, one potential method is soil vapor extraction. And usually, when you get to these, you know, you may be above the screening level, but in terms of doing remediation, you know, it's not real effective, because we do have some sites where, you know, we have been, have soil vapor extraction being done, and what we're finding is we, it's starting, we're starting to hit the, how to say, the, we're getting so much of reduction in contaminant concentrations, and it starts to level out. So, it is, you know-
Point diminishing returns, basically.
That was a term, I'm starting to get tired here, I think.
Yeah.
That was, yeah, I'm sorry, that was what I was, yeah. That is what I was trying to say.
I'm picking up where you're going, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
We're on the same wavelength, great.
Yes. Yeah, so that's, well, I know we have a few dry cleaner sites in the South Bay, that our target was to get to unrestricted use levels, we're just not getting there. But, well, the problem is, is you have clay soils, it tends to limit your movement, we're talking about potential migration, but it also does tend to cause you problems when you're trying to, well, not only when it's migrating outward, but when you're trying to pull it into your extraction well, you know, it tends to limit how well that the TC or other volatile organic compounds are moving through the soil. So, what I'm saying is that, you know, as you get out, as you radiate out from where the, we believe the release originated, I don't know that, you know, you look at what remedial methods might be implemented, and I don't know that soil vapor extraction, and certainly excavation, you know, you're excavating a lot of soil just to get what's in the void space that, you know, relative, you know, there's not a lot of contaminant mass there.
I just want to add one thing about your question about vapor migration horizontally, that the applicant is going to be putting in vapor plugs to prevent any off-site migration due to the utility lines that are being put in, so that's, I just wanted to mention that as well.
So, what that sounds like is that by allowing this project to move forward, we might decrease the possibility of horizontal transmission rather than increase it, or it's just, or is that just an effort to make sure that the new transmission lines put in, as a result of the construction, don't cause additional horizontal transmission?
The second.
Okay. So, at least, so it's, basically, it's neutral, that, you know, if there is a risk of horizontal transmission, this project will neither increase nor decrease that potential transmission. And it didn't sound like, I guess I didn't get a super clear answer, but I didn't hear any comments from DTSC that allowing this to move forward would prevent future efforts to remediate or to protect the neighboring communities. But if anyone at DTSC has a different thought on that, I'd love to hear it.
I believe what you said is correct.
Okay. All right. So, I think that's, that's, that's something for me to think about as we move forward. Thanks.
Councilmember Phil Setz.
Hi, thanks very much. I, just a couple of questions. I just want to make sure that I understand what, what you said a minute ago and a little bit earlier correctly. So, I mean, the way we got to this, this point is, you know, there's a plan, and we discover this, we drilled a bunch of, took a bunch of samples, and we discovered this, wait a second, there's a toxic plume down here, right? And so, the remediation for that is, let's move some houses over here and do some other stuff, right? And that will, and that looks like it'll fix it. And then the neighbors went out, and they did some of their own testing across the street, and they said, right, and the reason the remediation will work is because we're making certain assumptions about the soil and the mobility of the vapors through it and so forth. Neighbors went, did some of their own samples, and they said, wait a second, you know, we're seeing this stuff over here where it's not supposed to be, therefore, your assumptions about how much there is and what the transmissibility through the soil, you know, they must be wrong, right? And therefore, you know, we need to revisit this issue over here on 1601 California. And so, if I understand what I think I heard you said, it's, no, 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 right? Our data on 1601 California is still good, if you've discovered stuff across the street, and if it is related to the plume that's under 1601 California, that's an issue we need to deal with across the street, but it doesn't impact anything that we measured, you know, on the site itself. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
Okay. So, thank you. Okay. And then the other question is just to what Corey asked a minute ago, which I think he's, he's asking, looks, do you foresee any circumstance, you know, based on what we find across the street, and, you know, whether it's related to this, do you foresee any circumstance where we might kind of, might, might want to come back and dig a great big hole on 1601 California, but we can't because there's houses in the way? And I think you said no.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand, you said about digging a great big hole.
His question about, about the modified design and remediation, if I understand it right, is, do you foresee any circumstance, based on what we find across the street and so forth, you might come back and say, hey, you know what, we need to be, dig a big hole in 1601 California in order to get rid of this stuff, but oops, we can't because we built a lot of houses on top of it. You don't think that's likely to happen?
I don't foresee that, because usually, if you're going to dig excavation, you have a very significant contaminant source.
Right.
And like I said, even though we're above screening levels, you're probably not talking huge, you know, massive contaminant. So, well, the short answer to your question is, no, I don't foresee that there would be, we'd be, need to be digging a great big hole.
So, then, to summarize, I think, the opinion I think we're hearing is that the remediation proposed by Stanford with the 29 units, okay, from a perspective of dealing with toxicity issues, which is different from sort of architecture and design issues, which a couple people have brought up too, but for patient, dealing with toxicity issues, it's at least good enough, right? That is, irrespective of what they discovered across the street, you don't think that would render that invalid?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Vice Mayor Sherriff?
Well, I really appreciate Councilmember Phil Setz and Councilmember Wolbach's summary of that, because that was sort of where I was trying to get to in my head, if, what you just stated. And so-
I was just slow.
No, no, you were fast, no, you summarized it much better. You really did. And so, to summarize in my own way, what I just heard was, if we approve this, it does not put the neighbors in any worse situation across the street. And therefore, approving this increases safety and makes for a safer and, and better environment. And so, therefore, I haven't heard any argument as to why we shouldn't approve this based on the toxicity issues. Would that be a fair summary, too?
I think so.
Okay. With that, I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay. You want to speak to your motion?
I do. So, I mean, obviously, what I'm most concerned about here is making sure that, one, the college terrace neighbors are not put in any worse situation. And I haven't heard anyone articulate why they would suffer from us doing this. And then the second thing is, obviously, I wouldn't want the new Stanford residents to have been in any danger. Frankly, I, I think it's unlikely that Stanford would want to put their own residents in danger, I, I got to say, I think that's unlikely. But it is our job to look at that and think, and we have DTSC telling us that what Stanford is doing is appropriate, and, you know, and the fact they're going above and beyond. And given the fact they're going above and beyond, and the only person's articulated anything that they should do more of is Mr. Siegel, frankly. I wasn't completely happy with Stanford's answer, frankly, I thought it was not the best answer. But I didn't hear DTSC say, "You should do this." If DTSC told me that it'd be better to do this, or that there's a reason to do it, I would include that in the motion, frankly. I might even be open to including it in the motion anyway, frankly. And that would depend on, you know, anyway, we'll leave it. So, I think we should move forward on this, and, you know, I hope DTSC will take the neighbors' concerns very carefully, and I'm sure they will. And, you know, if there is contamination, I would expect the responsible party, whoever that is, to step up, and hopefully you guys will use whatever it is to, to get that done.
Councilmember Niss?
So, hearing that these two are quite separate, which is certainly what I heard the entire group of you say, I'm seconding-
the entire group of you say, I'm seconding this because I think we should follow the recommendations of staff tonight. But I hope we'll continue to be aware of the neighbors' property and whether or not there is any aspect of that that can be faulted on Stanford or in some other way on another, someone way back when, maybe H P. Because I, I think you probably cannot tell when that happened. Am I correct?
I'm sorry, pardon.
You probably don't know when the contamination that the neighbors are speaking about could have happened.
No.
Because, as I, as I understand it, the testing probably wasn't done 30 years ago or 20 years ago.
That's correct.
Okay, good. Okay, this is troubling and I feel, I feel, I feel bad for the neighbors, but we've listened now for about an hour and a half of testimony, and, and it's pretty much stayed the same. And the consistency is what has made me second the motion and, and support the vice mayor's motion to go forward.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes, we have focused primarily on the issue of the toxics and that's appropriate. I do have a couple of other things to bring up, but before I go there, because it's so important, so I do understand that if there's an issue that has to be remediated, then whoever the responsible party is, then DTSC has the authority to hold that entity responsible and accountable for costs associated with that remediation or mitigation, correct? Okay. So, that's not associated with approval of this project, then. So, just a little clarification I can around some issue around that, which is, I'm supposing that the residents have paid for their own testing to this point in time. So, can they recoup that cost if it turns out to be, and I'm not assuming one way or the other here, but let's just say, for purpose of conversation, if that, there is a link determined that from the 1601 or whichever site, can the residents recoup the costs of testing? And at what point is more testing justified at whose expense?
I think as far as recouping the cost, we don't really have a good way to accomplish that for the residents.
Say that again, please, I'm sorry.
You know, as far as recouping the residents' costs, say there is a connection established, I don't believe we have a, I don't have any past experience with other sites where I've done that. I don't, I don't think we have a good mechanism to accomplish that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so as far as recouping their costs, I don't think we have a good way to accomplish that. I'm sorry, what was the second part you asked?
And then tangent to that is, that's just for sake of conversation, say that you take a look at the samples, I mean, you have the samples that they, they have submitted, and if there's more testing that is merited, is that also, is that DTST pay for that, or do the neighbors have to also pay for that, or what's the consequence of that?
Well, I think if it appears there is some connection to this site, we'd have to request that Stanford do sampling. And I think the first thing we need to do at this point is just, with this being new information, usually when you're, well, as far as the status in this correlation, usually what you do with the site, you come up with what you consider the conceptual site model. I think that's the first thing we need to do here is, well, revisit our conceptual site model, well, just to try to determine how, you know, basically the T C got, may have gotten from point A to point B.
Okay, all right, great. And then a question that, or a point that Mr. Siegel brought up, and that's a plan that was up here earlier, and if I get this incorrect, you'll, you'll correct me, but there was one of the homes that had been, I think it was a relocated home, that was 50 feet from the sample site, but not necessarily 50 feet from the contamination. So, what would be your response to that? Did I capture that correctly?
I'm sorry, I might have to defer that.
Councilmember Holman, I think the suggestion was that the site hadn't been characterized adequately by Mr. Siegel, so he was saying that it may be 50 feet from the hotspot that's identified, but perhaps not from contamination. That's a suggestion that the contamination hadn't been fully identified, I thought.
That's correct, yeah. I think we're saying the same thing. So I guess my question is, is that home far enough away from the point of larger contamination? Because it wasn't clear that there'd been enough drilling done or sampling done.
For, for most of the sampling location.
I'm sorry, just a second. Our procedures are that members of the public or the applicants have to be called on to be able to speak. Councilmember Holman, if you want to ask a question of the applicant or whoever.
Sure, you're welcome to respond to the question.
Sorry about that. For most of the sampling locations, there was an additional sampling location between where we had a higher concentration and then a low concentration before the home. The one location that Mr. Siegel pointed out, there was in fact not an additional sampling location to the home, but one right near or on that same lot where we did not get an elevated concentration of T C E.
So if the sampling was on or near the lot, and it didn't show much, but that doesn't indicate necessarily to me that it was 50 feet from the point of the intense toxic situation.
Honestly, I have not measured it, but at that location, there is not an issue of T C E beneath that home.
My other questions have to do with staff, and that is, there was something stated earlier that none of the streets had changed, but actually in looking at the maps, there is a new cul-de-sac on Amherst Court. And there was a comment made also that there are now no sidewalks on Amherst. So, can staff respond to those questions, please?
Yes, related to the additional cul-de-sac off of Amherst, there is, I assume you're, you're wanting to address the fire issue? Is that your concern with that one?
Well, width and fire issue both. It's like, is it navigable? Is it fire accessible? It looks to be a right angle turn.
Yes, and that's the same as the other cul-de-sacs that are within the development. You know, many years ago, when this project was appealed to council, there were concerns about cul-de-sacs. There are, on the other end of the property, some much longer sort of alleyways cul-de-sacs. Those were reviewed by the fire department at that time, and it was found that response time was sufficient. And so we don't see any issues with the newly proposed cul-de-sac.
And what about the removal, if it was removal of sidewalks on Amherst?
So, to the best of my knowledge, both sidewalks are still proposed, and I would ask the applicant to confirm that, just because I'm coming in late on this project.
Okay, please.
Yes, both of the sidewalks on Amherst Street are still in the plan as they were when the tentative map and final map were approved. I think what was being referred to is the new cul-de-sac does not have sidewalks in it, just like the other cul-de-sacs in the plan do not have sidewalks in them. So, I think that's what was trying to be stated.
Okay. And then the last question, I think, is for staff, then I'll have a couple of comments. The last question for staff is the Record of Land Use Action, it seems to me to be incomplete. You'd mentioned the one comprehensive plan reference that Bill Ross had mentioned, but also I don't see anything on here that says that, which is typically the case, it's more the architectural review findings, but why wouldn't it be here since the architecture's changed, that the plans will be built according to significant, be built, what is the language used, according to, seemingly according to the plan set submitted and approved on X date. And there's nothing here, so it's, it's not clear to me what the council is actually approving in a specific and identified manner, according to the Record of Land Use Action.
So, there is an existing Record of Land Use Action that deals with all of the conditions of approval, the architectural review, all of the standard conditions, and that's still operative. This particular land, Record of Land Use Action is only meant to memorialize this discreet amendment to the final map. That being said, we do, you know, we do recommend that there be at least two modifications. One is, as Director Gilman mentioned, the incorporation of the consistency findings. And then second, a standard indemnification provision.
And then, but there's no reference, understanding that the other Record of Land Use Action exists, but there's no reference to, unless I'm not reading this correctly, there's no reference to these maps, the subdivision map acts, map plans that have been submitted. So, how do we know? I mean, it talks about the address and such, but how do we know it's this plan set that we're approving? It refers to the tract number and such, but how do we know it's this plan set that we're approving? Do you find it somewhere, or not? No? Can we add that?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I think you're right. I think we should add a recital D clarifying the amendment and identifying that, the particular application for the final map amendment.
I'm presuming that's good with the maker, but would you accept that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I'd like to add the other two as well while we're, so we don't lose track of them.
Okay, adding reference to the comprehensive plan. And what was the second one you mentioned, Carl?
There's the standard indemnity agreement and the incorporation of the consistency finding.
With, with the map plans that have been submitted?
With the original map, right?
No, these, this map plan.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the other thing is, because what, because what we have on the plans is just the map, right? So, what we have, you know, in the staff report and in the presentation and such, is that's where the home layout is. And so, what weds, what weds the applicant and their approval to the layout that's been presented? I don't find anything that weds them to this plan of home design, home layout, street layout. Well, the street layout's on the map, but the home isn't. Homes aren't.
So what you're doing is you are adopting a separate document, which is the final map that is actually approved and by the city engineer.
Yeah, yes, but if you look at the maps, there are no building site, there's no buildings indicated about locations and such, so it's just the lots, so.
If I may, the development agreement restricts the areas in which we can regulate. And so, these are homes on the interior of the site and therefore not under our discretion, other than, you know, massing and scale and things of that nature. There aren't, there are no interior setbacks and things that you would normally think of.
But there is mass and scale. There's some number of units. There's, is there no F A R even? I don't recall that long ago. What I'm saying is, we're just kind of like giving a blank check here, it seems like, based on prior approvals, and this is not the same. I'm just trying to get clarity on what it is we're approving and passing on.
So basically, you're just approving the lot lines at this point. You've already approved all of the architecture that you had purview over under the development agreement. Now you're just simply reconfiguring the actual lines, lot lines and street lines on a map.
So how do we know the houses are going, what assurance do we have going forward? Not that Stanford wouldn't want to do this, but what assurance do we have in a record that indicates that, you know, let's just say, the home that Mr. Siegel identified, that it is actually going to be 50 feet away from that point? What do we have? I mean, we have a staff presentation and a staff report. How do we know that it, that's where it's going to be located? And how do we know that those barriers are going to be created? What do we have that indicates that these mitigations are going to actually happen? It's not in the Record of Land Use Action in front of us tonight.
Right. So, and that's a fair point. And I think that you do have discretion to impose some additional mitigation measures. DTSC will of course take care of that in their, you know, regulatory action. But we would also suggest that if you want sort of a belt and suspenders approach, that you also adopt as additional mitigation measures in this Record of Land Use Action, the mitigation measures that are identified in the disclosure statement.
Can you point us to a page? That would be helpful.
Yes. It's packet page 80 and 81. There are six additional mitigation measures. And that would give you some further assurance that the mitigations are being followed.
Can I offer that as another amendment to the maker of the motion? It's packet page 80 and 81.
So I'm not sure why mine doesn't seem to have packet pages in it.
It's in attachment C, the correspondence, it follows the newsletter.
It's like page 15, 16 and 16.
15 and 16, all right.
Yeah, the correspondence.
And also, this, while you're looking for that, Vice Mayor, I don't see on this that...
Your question was, do I would accept these as, and these were the suggested mitigations?
Additional condition of approval.
Belt and suspenders, I'm fine with that. Put those in.
Okay, good, thank you. And...
I think I'm fine with it if I find it.
Okay, and then the other thing that this doesn't seem to cover is that homes will be at a minimum 50 feet away from any, what's the word I should use there, point of?
Yes, T C E sample location.
Okay, can we add?
Or hotspot.
Can we add that too? That's not in here.
So...
One, two, three, four, five, six.
That's not in there, it's correct. Does Stanford, can I ask Stanford if they have any concerns with that?
Well, that's what they're saying they're going to do, so go ahead ahead, but...
Yes, you may. No, we have no concerns with that. I think that's, that's a good addition. We endorse that, and that's how the plan has been engineered. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, I think the last question is, there are sites that, I'm not sure if it's a question for staff or DTSC or both, but there are parts of these sites that you don't want anybody digging in, you don't want anybody planting a vegetable garden in, you don't want anybody building a basement underneath a house, you don't want people adding houses in these particular areas. So, again, we have, especially in this case, because we have limited review capability, what happens over time that protects these things from happening?
One of the conditions that we, we just added is the site management plan condition. And so DTSC has indicated there will have to be a site management plan or land use controls in place in that area where the hotspots occur, so it's a, the open space area. So that will be taken care of by the, the mitigation measures you just added to the Record of Land Use Action.
Including, like, more minimal but still unsafe activities, because this seems to be kind of large scale.
This is where DTSC would impose any restrictions on digging, on land use, you know, on uses of the area or anything like that.
And will the site be posted so that people will just know, like, don't go there? You know, it's like we tell people, it's like, you know, call first, don't dig. You know, we, we make people aware of those kinds of things. So, will this site have some kind of notifications like that?
I, I don't know. This will be determined in this next phase by DTSC, what these management conditions or what this management plan will consist of.
Can, Mr. Mayor, can I ask DTSC that question?
Usually it's sites where there's contamination remaining above unrestricted use levels. And when I say sites, in this case, it would be the area where there are going to be no residential, residential units constructed. And typically what we put in place is a land use covenant with the site owner. And you asked a question about, you know, sign keeping people out. I think the, the big potential risk here is, you know, from the soil vapor intrusion, so that I think one of the primary restrictions would be against any future building over that area. Because as far as people entering the area, you know, it's not like there's soil, you know, shallow soil contamination where the people are going to come in contact with that's going to cause, you know, adverse health effects. It's if you were to construct future buildings there, that they would need some sort of vapor intrusion mitig- intrusion mitigation system. So there, you know, well, there'll probably be some other restrictions, but you know, as far as in terms of addressing any potential risk, that would be the primary one, limitation on future construction of buildings in that area.
And I think what you said at first, there would be a covenant put on the site?
Yeah, be a land use covenant. And what that is, it's an agreement executed between the site owner and DTSC, and then of course that's recorded with the county.
Yeah, okay. That, that's helpful to know. So I think that has to do with my question. I guess my comment would be, I, I'm not sure I agree with the process on this. I think it's unfortunate. We had a project here earlier that was, you know, the Maybell project, and it's a small site. This is a much larger site. I think there were so many missed opportunities here, and I was hoping that we would have an opportunity to send this back to get some other things done. It's like, you know, we talked even about a path, a pedestrian bicycle path on the Maybell site. This is 17 acres, basically. And I'd argued long and hard earlier for there to be a road that continued post-construction here. So I just, I won't go on and on about it, but I think there's so many things that could have made this more, a more better community, to use bad grammar intentionally. But I think it could have been a better community. I think it could have been a better project. I think it could have reduced car trips and enhanced pedestrian bicycle passage. So I will leave it at that and wish, wish our neighbors on the east side of the, west side of the street, I guess it is. I never get that right. It's amidst the north side of the street. All Godspeed and good health, and trust that DTSC will follow up with them, report back any findings that you make, and we will expect to hear. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that last point. I guess by approving the map tonight, we are not dealing with the issue on the west side of California Avenue. And yet data has been presented that says there might be preferential pathways connecting, linking from the source across California Avenue. So I guess the, the DTSC has said that they will have a timely response to the data that's been presented. And I guess we look forward to those results and any linkages that might be made to the source.
Councilmember Wolbach?
So first, I'm just going to say that I, I wish Palo Alto had clearer rules, maybe some more consistent rules around how we handle concerns about TCE. You know, there's been some discussion about that in the community. There's a group of enterprising students at County High School that's been focused on this, and some other people in the community that have been focused on this. And I think that the communication between those community advocates and staff has already been initiated, and I look forward to furthering and being part of that discussion, seeing the community have that discussion for the, for the long term, so that when cases like this come up, everybody is on the same page about what the rules are, and just so we have greater clarity as a community, rather than the lengthy discussion. But I think that this has been very educational for all of us. There was a hint from the maker of the motion earlier that he would be open to, to an amendment, but I first wanted to turn to the applicant. I understand that it is not the preference of the applicant to include sub-slab ventilation or depressurization, but I've also heard from the applicant that financing was not the reason for that preference. And I was wondering whether they would be comfortable with that being part of this project. So I think it would increase the level of comfort by the community and also by the council.
You're asking what?
I'm asking whether they are comfortable with, with sub-slab depressurization or ventilation being an additional mitigation amendment.
I'll allow that question.
I appreciate the concern. We are concerned for the health and welfare of our faculty members as well. That said, we are concerned about putting, instilling, perhaps instilling within faculty members a sense of security deriving from something that we know from practice they may not maintain, want to maintain. That said, we would like to ask to, since we still have closure work to do with DTSC, to work with DTSC, DTSC on this. And if they come to the conclusion that it would be materially beneficial to improving the protect, protection against vapor, indoor air intrusion, then we would be willing to consider that. But I, since DTSC will be still working with us on the, on the post-construction requirements and regulations, we would like to work with them on this and leave it up to their professional judgment.
Given that what I've heard from DTSC thus far is that, is that they think you've already gone above and beyond what's necessary for the site. I think it's highly unlikely that in their professional judgment, they'll ask you to add such sub-slab depressurization or ventilation. Yeah, I guess I look back to the maker and my colleagues to see if anyone else is interested in pursuing this, this question further.
Well, if you want to offer an amendment, offer an amendment.
Yeah, I'll hold off on, actually, I'm trying to figure out the best way to phrase this. Yeah, I'll just offer it as amendment, and hopefully it'll be, be friendly, that, you know, an additional vapor intrusion protection be added in the form of sub-slab ventilation or depressurization.
So... I'm not going to accept it. I don't feel that strongly one way or the other, actually. I was interested in their comments that it actually would be difficult to maintain.
I'll support the amendment. All right. Do you want to speak further to it, or can we...
Yeah, just to speak very briefly again, if cost isn't the issue, I think it's worth including. It'll, again, increase the level of comfort in the community and on the council for approving this project.
Yeah, and I'll just say briefly, I, I think that the site does have ongoing concerns about the residual contaminants and toxics, and that additional measures would be prudent, and to put them in at the outset is the lowest cost way to address it. And so that's my reason for supporting it. Does anyone else wish to speak on the amendment specifically? Let's vote on the amendment. And that passes on a six to two with Councilmember Schmidt and Phil Seth voting no. All right. And Councilmember Phil Seth, did you want to speak on the main motion?
I had one more question I want to ask DTSC, if possible, which is, so you, you indicated a couple of times that you have this model, right? And the model predicts that, you know, there's not going to be a lot of TCE on the other side of the street, and the residents have come back and said, wait a second, we found TCE on the other side of the street. And you've said a couple of times that you're going to review that information and go update your model. How long is that going to take?
I think we're talking relatively short timeframe. I don't know that I can give you an exact timeframe, but we've already reviewed their sampling reports. We do have some additional information we need to get from the residents. Well, specifically, you know, it'd help us to know where, where they did get some detections, what the locations of those are.
Right.
And obviously, I think we're going to need to have some discussion with Stanford too, because if there is any further action required, I think we're looking upon them to do the, would need to look upon them to fund it. I, I mean, I think we're talking relatively short timeframe, you know, I'd say some, hopefully within the month.
Okay, okay, so it's not like end of year or something like that?
No, I'm not looking at a long drawn out process.
The reason I ask is the residents, you know, are saying, wait a second, your model must be wrong, right? And I think so, we're going to resolve that in the next month, is what you're saying. So that's good.
That's our target, to do a relatively short timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick question. I was wondering if the council would be interested in adding the timing condition that we raised in our supplemental memo to council. It was a suggestion that we say that we're not going to issue the building permits for those seven homes closest to the hotspots until after there's been a no further action issued.
Yes.
Okay, so the maker and the secondary have accepted that, and we'll let you work through, making sure, maybe Director Gittleman, if you can add that to the, to the language. And then I have a final question, and whereas Councilmember Holman had raised issues around a spur road, mine is more modest, but a concern which, my understanding of the, the map is that there are no pedestrian accesses to, out of this site, other than to California Avenue. Is that correct? And we didn't really discuss this. Why is that?
There were several, several discussions about that as part of the original proposal. You know, originally, there was conversations about having a street or pedestrian access out to Page Mill Road, and that was determined to be, the applicant was not offering that. It was not required. There was no impacts that needed to be addressed that would require such a connection. And so that's why it wasn't implemented originally.
When you say it's not required, is it within our discretionary approval?
There, there were no SEQA impacts that would have required that connection. And there are, as from a transportation perspective, there are several connections to California Avenue, and so we felt with the original proposal that that was sufficient.
Okay, so that didn't really answer my question.
I believe this was a subject of, had a bit of discussion when the council first heard the tentative map a year or two ago. And we'd have to look back into the record about, you know, why, what the discussion was about and what, why the final decision was made not to include that. We could certainly do that.
So my question was whether it's within our discretionary approval.
So we'd have to look back at the development agreement as to what is in your overall approval. I know that tonight, the particular subdivision map act section that allows for this change in circumstances on the final map limits the council's discussion or the discretion to amend the final map to just the changed circumstances. So if you want to pursue this, you would have to link it to, you know, the changed circumstances that's in front of you tonight on the reconfiguration of the homes.
So link it in that there has to be a nexus or simply link them?
I think both.
Well, that's disappointing. I, I do think that the, the planning for a development of this size without pedestrian access other than out California Avenue is, is really a lost opportunity, and that it certainly could have been imposed. I don't recall the full discussion. I certainly recall that there were council sentiments of interest in having expanded circulation.
I recall the same, by the way.
Yeah.
But I don't know what happened to it.
Well, and there, there are separate issues between a roadway and pedestrian access. And, and I think the pedestrian circulation is important, and the notion that folks from the interior of this development should have to go out Amherst to California Avenue to Hanover to Page Mill to get the, to the, to get to the 100 yards that otherwise would be directly to Page Mill is not progressive design. And the same thing really goes on accessing Hanover, that to get from the interior of Hanover shouldn't be a circuitous loop. That's, that's the very sort of planning that we, we thought we had gotten away with when we, when we stopped building subdivisions where kids had, had to go a half mile to, to get to a park that was 200 yards away. I see Jean McCowen wants to speak to this, and I'll allow it.
Actually, I don't need to speak to that. I wanted to go back to the motion with respect to the, Mr. Wolbach's motion with respect to the pressurization system. We just wanted to clarify which homes that applies to. Is it the ones that are within the 50-feet locations of the TCE presence? Because there's 68 single-family homes on the site, many of which are not anywhere near this location. So I just would like to get some clarification to the, the scope of that. I know it's already been voted on, but it would be helpful to clarify that.
All right. We'll get that clarification. While you're there, though, let me ask you, what's Stanford's rationale for not supporting pedestrian access except through California Avenue on this?
What I recall from the discussion back at the time the map was approved, it was not focused on pedestrian access, it was focused on vehicular access through an adjoining parcel that could exit out onto Page Mill Road. That's what I remember. Now, we're all kind of doing this from memory tonight. It was not about pedestrian access, it was about having a vehicular access route through an unrelated parcel. I think it was 1450 Page Mill, in fact, out, out to Page Mill Road. That was the big discussion point at the time.
So what's Stanford's position on having good pedestrian access?
You know, honestly, Pat, I don't know that we've looked at whether there's routes through other adjoining parcels. I don't, I don't know that, I don't recall that we, we were even asked to look at that. It was all about, can't you have vehicles traveling off the site out to Page Mill rather than onto California Avenue? That's what I recall.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Yeah, along those lines, I think, I think the recollection is correct. There was Columbia Street, I think, was used as the construction road during construction of some of the houses. You can tell me if that's right or wrong. But I think it was Columbia, and then Columbia connected all the way through to Page Mill, and that was vehicular. I don't know, I don't know, though, to be perfectly honest here, I don't know, though, that that meant that we only wanted vehicles. It's pretty much assumed that a road is going to have, a sidewalk, the side of it's going to also have pedestrian accessibility too, so.
But I'm not sure sending pedestrians out to Page Mill Road is what people were thinking about. I mean, to me, again, the, what I recall was a construction period timeframe for that access off of Page Mill, to not use California Avenue, which Chris talked about earlier. And then there was also a further request for a permanent
Yes.
exit out through that adjoining parcel out to Page Mill.
Yes.
And I don't think that, as I remember it, that was not about pedestrians, it was totally about vehicles.
It was vehicular.
Yeah, is what I recall.
It was more vehicular, but still, it's, too bad it isn't there.
And I, I'll add that the, there have been discussions about if we don't have a vehicular spine running down between California Avenue and Page Mill, then a, a bike spine is something that's been talked about. And here we're doing this major project, and we are not taking advantage of that opportunity. And I think it's a real lost opportunity, and I have a, a way that I will at least try to partially address that. But I first want to take on the clarification issue that you requested. So Councilmember Wolbach, do you want to clarify the intent? And we may need to revoke.
My thinking was that it would apply to all of the homes on the site, but if it is acceptable to the mayor, I'd actually like to ask Mr. Siegel if he had a recommendation about whether sub-slab depressurization or ventilation, excuse me, whether sub-slab depressurization or ventilation should be associated with every home at the site or only those closest to hotspots?
I don't see him still...
He's right behind...
Oh. All right, I'll allow that.
I was showing DTSC the Building 30 where, where it clearly is needed. Wearing my other hat, in Mountain View, we would... Wearing my other hat, in Mountain View, we would be requiring it, that we have a policy in, not just directly above Plumes, but near Plumes, we require at least passive mitigation with the option to go active. And that is, the passive mitigation does not require any maintenance by the building occupants. It's passive, but it does require some monitoring after construction to see whether there's a problem. So I would, I would recommend it for everything on the parcel.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. And again, I think that this, the way it's phrased now leaves the option open, whether it's ventilation, which is passive, or depressurization, which would be active, and leaves that flexibility up to the applicant.
I believe we are doing passive already. That's, that's what we're doing, so. But I, again, I would, yeah, so.
I think you're really familiar with our procedures, and applicants and members of the audience do not have the authority to interject unless they've been called upon.
Well, I think you did give me the opportunity to speak to this question, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So if, if we need to clarify in the motion that it would apply to all of the homes at the site, we can add that, and, you know, if it would, if it pleased the mayor.
Okay, so it's clear that's the intent, let's go ahead and do it and revote.
Right. I have a question on this before we.
Yes, go ahead.
So, are some of the homes are already being under construction, and so wouldn't that cost a lot for those homes that are already there? I mean, I would want to exclude those homes that are actually under construction.
First to staff. So.
I think the suggestion is to limit to the 68 homes on this parcel and not, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll have to ask the applicant if any are already.
Okay, we'll hear from the applicant.
There are 68 homes total in the project. Councilmember Scharf is exactly right, some are under construction already, actually 28 foundations are already built. They are furthest away from, they are not on this amended part of the final map. So what you're talking about would be the 40 homes that are, have not yet been built.
Are you willing to limit it to the 40 homes?
That's fine with me.
Yes, and those are the homes that are, they were held up because there were greater issues. All right, let's go ahead and revote on E, which was the amendment, just with these clarifications. And that now passes on a seven to one with Councilmember Phil Seth voting no. All right. So then, I'd like to offer another amendment, and this is going to be a non-binding. It's to direct staff to attempt to negotiate with the project developer to identify any practical locations for pedestrian access either toward the east and Page Mill, or toward the, I guess, what is it, north here, toward Hanover. So either toward Page Mill or Hanover pedestrian access.
Don't worry, it's fine.
Ignore the Maker.
It's the Maker and the Second.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, did you have something? Sorry?
Wait, you were seconding it.
Well, I don't know what needs to be clarified. We're asking our staff to attempt to.
You're saying toward, you're saying toward Page Mill or Hanover, so.
Yes. So.
So toward Page Mill, you mean connecting to Page Mill or connecting to Hanover, or, I'm not quite clear.
Well, it would be pedestrian, they can't out of this obtain necessarily full access to Page Mill, except they can obtain access out of the rear of the property that would connect to one of the properties on Page Mill, and then they, we'd have to have a separate agreement to allow that access subsequently. So what we want to do is establish that out of this property, there is a pathway, if possible. Same thing in the direction toward Hanover. So they're adjacent properties, so that's why I said toward, rather than assure that there would be the connection, which I don't think we could necessarily achieve. Now, I'd love if Stanford came forward and said, yes, we can work through that, but they, they have tenants in some of those, and, and so this may be setting it up for a future opportunity.
I think, I think one of the properties on Page Mill is actually Stanford occupied, so there's, yeah, and so, do you want it to be pedestrian or pedestrian and bicycle?
Well, I'm meaning pedestrian and bicycle.
Okay, so that should be in there.
Okay. So I want to leave this open enough as just a direction to attempt to achieve this outcome. Yes. Okay, are we ready? Please vote on the board. And that passes on an eight to zero vote with Councilmember DeBois recused. So thank you, everyone. That concludes this item. So I just want to share, the break that I asked to have to confer with staff was because I had really reconsideration on how we acted on the preceding item on the Maybell Project, and my interest was not in, in changing the outcome of the project, but I really had discomfort in the findings that we made to, to be able to do that, and wanted to see if there was any potential to rezone the property so that our findings would be more appropriately aligned with, with the project. And unfortunately, the only way to do that would really be with a PC. This doesn't, even though they are single lots, they are configurations that they wouldn't fit in either an R1 or an R2 zoning, and it illustrates the irony of that the only way to have this project aligned with, with zoning would be under a PC ordinance. So I just want to share that with my colleagues, that I, I really have that discomfort over, over what we found ourselves in a predicament in, in having to make findings that I think were very weak. And thanks for allowing me the discretion of explaining that. Any other council member questions or comments?
We have another item.
We do, yes, that's right. Sorry, I was out of order, I was hoping we were out the door.
Well, that makes 11 or 12 of us.
So our final item is the, item former, I would just say, it's approval of a contract with West Coast Arborists in an amount not to exceed $3.680 million, over three years for tree pruning and removal services on a 10-year maintenance cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was, as you recall, last night, pulled by some of the council members for discussion. We did put out an addendum to the staff report this afternoon, hopefully the council has it before you. What this addendum does try to do is identify in sort of high-level terms what the differences would be as to the, the cycle and the percentage of canopy that would be removed under either 15, 10, or 7-year cycle, and it also identifies the cost difference if the council was interested in moving from the 10-year cycle, which has been approved in the budget, to a 7-year cycle. And Walter and I are here to answer questions. He can speak more specifically to the, the canopy itself, and I can speak to the funding. Thank you.
Thank you. So we really had council member questions on this and reconsideration, so I think those who removed it from consent can address this first. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I, well, as I'm sure you know, that I've had questions and concerns about this from when it came to Finance Committee on a 15-year cycle, and then even reducing it from a 15 to a 10-year cycle, because Mr. Passmore, Urban Forester, had said that the industry standard is five to 10 years. So I've, subsequent to that, even gotten more interested and concerned about our process, and when you're ready, I have a motion that I've drafted and provided to David. And, well, let me say, so, the letter that we got from the urban, the state's urban forester, it got me to thinking like, well, is it the right process that we're even using? Is it one contractor fits all, one-size-fits-all tree management? I don't have the answers to some of these things, but I do know that we have been a Tree City USA for 29 years, and that our city's named after a tree. And it seems to me that, looking at the letter that came and some subsequent conversation with Canopy and Catherine Martineau, that it seems like if our city can't come up with a model means to manage our urban forest, then what city can? We have many areas where we try to excel and be the leaders, it seems to me this is a very appropriate one where we can do, given the numerous advantages of our urban canopy. So if you are actually ready for a motion, I will put it out there. David? So it looks long, but it's really not.
Did we skip every other word, or what do we do?
Well, it's, it's, I broke it out into points so that it would be easy to follow here, so. So my, my suggestion is that we move forward, because City Manager actually indicated when we had the first discussion on this, that, okay, well, we can try this for a year and then revisit it. But then what we got was a three-year contract with no, with no opportunity for revisiting it or extension or amendment. So what I've suggested here is that we go ahead and approve the three-year contract that was put before us, but that we add annual review and optional extension and amendment clause, subject to council review and approval pending. And what this next section is really is, it is us evaluating what the best management practices would be for urban forest care, and quantifying the things that actually are very quantifiable now, the benefits of our urban forest for Palo Alto, and using those as the basis for how we do our contracting. And part of what I started seeing was, was that in conversation, both reading the state urban forest letter and actually conversation with, with Canopy, I started seeing like, well, is the urban forest really that much different than my own home property and my trees? Because I don't have the same people prune my very large trees that prune, as prune my small trees. They get very different care, different kinds of special treatment, and so that's kind of what has also led me to this. So I'll give you a minute to read this, it's kind of, some of it is just like indicating what the obvious things are in terms of advantages of an urban forest, so.
All right, so why don't we, you had a second, is that correct?
No, I just finished, I just shut up, so.
Wait, you spoke to your motion before the second, all right.
Yes.
It's been seconded, so why don't we take a moment to read it?
Yeah, come, yeah, go ahead and read it, please.
City Manager Keane, did you want to?
Well, it would be, in addition to clerk, would be nice if we got these ourselves, but I'd go ahead and do this, but I see this as potentially very significant expansion of the work plan, not just, I mean, we're not just talking about what the cycle is for our existing work. In addition, we have an urban forest master plan that, you know, would be more appropriate to look at in that context as to what extent, what extent these kinds of issues are being considered. Where are we with the urban forest master plan, anyway? Just adopted it?
Year two implementation.
Right.
Okay, so let us just read this. Okay.
And after people are ready, I'd like to respond to City Manager's comments.
They could do this then.
Are we coming back?
Second edition is coming back.
So he's been working with stakeholders.
Right.
This kind of process, this garbage might be in there, or it might conflict with something
that's in this.
Councilmember Niss, do you want to speak to your second?
Yes, and I just went down and spoke to Karen about this. And Karen, if I understand you, this is to move the, the actual amount not to exceed for the pruning and removal services, but the rest should include, and you're saying this is subject to council review and approval pending this. So you see that one, I don't know if this goes to the bottom or not, after, is B the end of it, I hope?
B is the end of it, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So what I just established, and Karen, if I'm wrong, tell me, that anything below approval pending is, is to be looked at and determined what the actual cost would be.
To determine what a, what a cost would be and what a plan would be, and then we can evaluate the cost. And, and just to respond to, to City Manager, yeah, it, it is a part of, would ideally be a part of urban forest master plan, but we haven't done this before, and the reason it's, what's prompting it now is that we have a budget item in front of us.
No, no, this needs to stay a budget item. I, I can't even imagine the city attorney would say that this is properly noticed for a discussion about the direction on a series of policy issues, number one. Number two, the urban forest master plan, second edition, is going to come before the council in October, where within that, we may have some of these sorts of things in there, you could have that policy discussion here. We need to start the contract. If you want to, I think it's, I think it's really limited to the kind of conditions that we have in the contract. You could amend the contract itself to deal with the terms and those sorts of things. And what I would suggest, if you're really interested in this, is that we proceed with this on a three-year basis. We, our contracts are always subject to a non-appropriation clause, so we could launch this for the first year, make the adjustment of the 300 and some thousand, and I'm just saying this because the whole councils, I mean, the Finance Committee and the councils will be looking at some big budget issues for 2018, and otherwise, you know, we were talking about adding a million dollars here right at this point. You just may reconsider that, both in the context of the subsequent urban forest master plan discussion, and as we get into the budget itself. But you could be in a position to launch the seven, staying on the seven-year cycle right now for the next year, and that gets us some time, but honestly.
Okay, so that's Vice Mayor Scharf?
Thank you. So, you know, on the back of this, we have a proposed motion. First of all, to speak to this motion, I wanted to say, I think we should stay on the seven-year cycle. I think that, that we don't want to damage the canopy while we think about this. And what I learned from the process after we voted last time was that the way they prune is they prune more in a 10-year cycle than you would on a seven-year cycle. And so therefore, I don't understand why, frankly, Councilmember Holman, you would support a 10-year cycle, and why not just support a seven-year cycle? So therefore, I'll move the staff, I don't know if it's a staff recommendation, but the staff suggested motion as a substitute motion, which is, direct staff to accept the original bid of $4,702,450, and that's on the back of that sheet, that you should be able to find there, and add, which is an additional one over the three-year term, and authorize the City Manager is designated to execute a new three-year term contract with West Coast Arborists in an amount not to exceed $4,702,450 for tree pruning and removal services on a seven-year maintenance cycle, and amend the fiscal year 2017 budget appropriations ordinance for the general fund by increasing the Public Works Department contract, et cetera, et cetera. Second, thank you, can I speak to it?
Yes.
So just briefly, this is a budget item. So just briefly, this is a budget item. I think the question before us was, should we do a 10-year cycle or a seven-year cycle? After getting the new information, I reconsidered it in my mind. I thought, we don't want to damage the canopy, let's go with the seven-year cycle. We're coming forward with the Forester master plan stuff. The rest of these things that Councilmember Holman raised, I think are good things. I think they're important things to talk about, but I think they belong in a noticed discussion, which is, the right time is when you come forward then, and that's when we should discuss all these things. And frankly, using that no appropriation clause, if we decide for some point to go to a 10-year cycle, we can probably always talk these people into moving to a 10-year cycle based on that. So let's use the precautionary principle that Councilmember Wallock mentioned earlier, do no harm to our canopy, let's do seven years, and let's talk about this when it comes back to us.
Okay. Councilmember Wolbach, you want to speak to your second?
I agree with everything Vice Mayor Scharf just said.
Councilmember Holman speaking to the substitute motion.
Yeah, it has to do with both, actually. So with the substitute motion, so this is also a three-year contract. You said there's a, what was the phrase, you said indemnification period?
But our standard contract includes an ability to terminate the contract on a certain noticed period at the discretion of the City Manager. So we have a non-appropriations clause that's required for all public entities in California, but we wouldn't need to utilize it to stop the contract. The City Manager could do that.
And on any basis whatsoever?
Yes.
Okay, all right. If that is the case, and presuming that, or trusting that these other issues will come forward as part of the urban forest master plan, and I feel like saying this, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be catty about it, but I just wrote the motion right before we came to the meeting, and we got this at places, so we're on even, we didn't either one give either one of us notice, so just to be fair there. So I can, I can support the substitute motion, given the clarification about us being able to.
Why don't you just need to?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I can support the substitute. And if that's okay with Councilmember Niss?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Schmidt?
Since the City Manager had the proposal in his memo, are you comfortable with the $300,000 from the budget stabilization reserve? Yes, Councilmember Schmidt, so just to remind the council where we are, you know, we have had some increased estimates in the closing for fiscal year 2016 that were above even our estimates a little bit earlier in the budget. Right now, what we would have in the budget stabilization reserve is $2 million above the 20% level, which is the top end of the range of your policy between 15, so we would be drawing $316,000 out of that for this year.
That's a fall. And just in terms of real numbers, what, I think our general fund is 170 million, or I can't remember exactly where we're at at this point, but what's, what is the budget stabilization reserve?
About $40 million then.
Okay, thank you. And we're, got it, thanks.
Okay, I see no more lights, please vote on the board. And that passes unanimously with Councilmember DeBois absent. And now, I think that concludes our meeting.